Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the 19th of February 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, laptops and other devices, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you all of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. As with all council meetings, any request to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset at any point throughout the meeting, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Members, it is my sad duty to formally report the death of a former Sedgfield Borough Councilor and great Acrelift Town Councilor, Malcolm Iverson. Malcolm served as a Borough Councilor for 10 years from 1999 to 2009 and was the husband of the former councillor Sarah Iverson, who served on this council from 2005 to 2021, whom some of you will know. Can I invite you all to join with me in standing for a moment's silence? Can I have a mover? councillor Hopgood.
Yeah Chair, can I move the minutes please?
Seconda.
Second the minutes Chair.
Are the minutes agreed? We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. We move on to item three. Colleagues, in view that the focus of this morning's meeting is to set the budget and council tax, I am seeking agreement from the council to waive standing orders to allow for the extension of the meeting should it go beyond two and a half hours. Do I have a second to the... councillor Hopgood?
Yes Chair, second that.
Can I ask the council to agree this course of action? Thank you. Colleagues, robust debate and disagreeing with one another is a healthy part of democracy and part of the democratic process. We all have a responsibility to set our interactions and debate respectfully. Let us remember that during this morning's process, where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the direction of legal and democratic services, it will not be revisited. Given the business to be transacted at this morning's meeting, I do not intend on making any further announcements. We move on to item four, the leaders' report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you Chair, good morning everyone. Since we last met, I've had the pleasure of attending with councillor Henderson the official opening of Belmont Community School and Belmont Church of England Primary School's brand new £40 million shared campus. This state-of-the-art learning environment was funded by the council and can cater for more than 1,200 children and young people. It's also County Durham's first low-carbon school site, with each building equipped with solar panels and air-source heat pumps. The new facilities at Belmont follow significant investment we have made in school buildings across County Durham, most recently at Spring Mua Grange at Spennymua. We are committed to providing children in County Durham with the best possible start in life. These may be challenging times, but investing in top-class facilities at Belmont is an investment absolutely worth making. It's an investment in children's futures now and for generations to come. It's also an investment in the community, as the new facilities at Belmont are expected to be worth more than eight million pounds in social value. This is the value of an organisation contributes to society beyond its business-as-usual activities. At Belmont, this will include more than 1,000 hours of activities aimed at supporting young people into work and organising career sessions and apprenticeship weeks. We will continue to support the teaching of our young people in this way, wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. We move on to item five, questions from the public. We have received no questions from the public for today's meeting. We move on to item six, petitions. There is one petition being presented at today's meeting. The petition relates to toddler time session at Spennymua Leisure Centre. The petition organiser, Ms Pauline Appleton, is in attendance today to present the petition. Ms Appleton, you will have five minutes to present your petition. I will indicate when there is one minute remaining.
Good morning Chair and members of the County Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this petition, which has been submitted to prevent the closure of the toddler time group at Spennymua Leisure Centre. The last session to take place was on Friday, the 31st of January. The petition signatories request that the sessions resume as soon as possible. As well as the signatures on the petition, there is a list of over 500 supporters. The action has also been supported by three county councillors, who have been tireless in their endeavours to stop the sessions ending. The toddler time sessions run twice weekly and were established over 34 years ago. They cater for babies and children from nought to four years, averaging about 30 children at each session. Toddler time is popular with many, as it is in the centre of town and easily accessed by those without transport, who walk there with prams and pushchairs. The facilities at toddler time help to support babies and young children to develop qualities which enable the child to become resilient, confident and to believe they can succeed. The babies and toddlers have different levels of knowledge and understanding and there are a number of activities within a familiar layout which promote inclusion and progression for all. Equipment including problem-solving toys, role-player activities, challenging toys like pedal bikes, building blocks to make obstacle causes and dens all provide opportunities to learn, rehearse and remember new skills. Many little ones have started to crawl and even taken their first steps using the toys. Some children like quieter activities and there are separate areas for reading, drawing and colouring. Some of the adults who attend the sessions are childminders, who have guidelines set by Ofsted. They find toddler time is ideal to help them hit their targets, as it is a safe and healthy environment. The group provides mental, physical and social wellbeing for both children and adults alike. Parents and carers are not just spectators at toddler time, they are very hands-on with the activities and play available. The children thrive in the language-rich environment and have positive role models using routine instruction and giving praise. It also gives children the opportunity to socially interact and to get to know others outside the family unit, as well as allowing the adults to integrate and support each other once or twice a week. Many new adults have turned up at sessions not knowing anyone, they feel a bit out of place and a few kind words help them feel welcome. Within weeks, they're mixing and have made new friends and have an opportunity to chat and socialise while their little one is close by. The equipment at toddler time sessions may seem outdated and traditional to some, but it is all age-appropriate and useful in the development of babies and toddlers. It would seem that there are now health and safety issues with the equipment, which the parents and carers were not aware of. However, they are more than happy to replace any such equipment themselves with money from local charities and fundraisers. Spennymua is not an affluent area and some of the parents and carers fear paying to attend a toddler group is a luxury. However, the cost of toddler time is acceptable and manageable at three pounds per child and one pound for any extra. The cost of the Players' Own and the Pink Gym, both situated within the leisure centre, are out of reach for most of the users at nearly double the cost of toddler time, with no concessions for extra children. The only similar session available within the community is in Croxdale on a Wednesday morning, which is only accessible for those who have transport.
One minute.
Thank you. The new Players' Own, which has been constructed within the centre, is a great addition to the leisure facilities for older children. Unfortunately, it is an inappropriate substitution for the toddler time age group and the facilities fall short for babies and young children. Also, many of the adults who are elderly are not agile enough to supervise the children in such a confined area. We request in this petition that the toddler time sessions resume as soon as possible. Spennymua should not lose this vital community service. Thank you.
Can I thank the petition organiser for presenting the petition and in doing so, ask the council to receive the petition, which will be forwarded to the services for a response? Agreed? Thank you. We move on to item seven, report from the Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Chair, can I present the report as noted in the papers?
No questions have been received in respect of the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. We move on to item eight, the council plan 2025 to 2029. Can I ask the head of corporate affairs to present the report?
Good morning everybody. I'm Steve Evans, head of corporate affairs. Following consideration by Cabinet on the 15th of January, the council plan is being brought forward for approval at full council. The plan itself is attached to appendix three of the report. The plan is our principal corporate planning document and explains how we will effectively deliver our day-to-day services, our longer-term ambitions and contribute to achieving the County Durham vision 2035. It will also be a key document in next year's LGA corporate peer review. Although the council plan spans a four-year period, we review it every year. This is so it remains relevant, within budget and timescale. We have now completed the process for this year. As with previous years, the review followed good practice, specifically government's best value standards, which define the characteristics of a well-functioning council. Therefore, the plan remains evidence-based, current and realistic. It also enables the whole organisation's performance to be measured and held to account. It aligns our strategic priorities with the authority's financial strategy and delivery arrangements and responds appropriately to local need, including the plans of partners and stakeholders. The new plan remains a high-level document, designed to give the reader an immediate sense for our strategic direction and what we are intending to deliver. It fully aligns with the medium-term financial plan and embeds actions around the Equality Act 2010 and retains the golden thread importantly, back to the County Durham vision 2035. As in the last few years, the plan also retains the ambitions of our economy, our environment, our communities, our people and our council and their supporting objectives. The updated plan was informed by a seven-week programme of consultation and engagement with members, officers, the public and stakeholders. This ran from the 29th of July to the 15th of September. Consultation was gathered both digitally through an online survey and a dedicated email address and through paper surveys available at our customer access points and libraries. Importantly, over 300 responses were received. Notably, we did make some changes as a result of the consultation and engagement, as you'd expect. These are detailed in the report to appendix two, but the key changes are rewording certain sections to make it easier to read and remove some of the local authority jargon, adding further detail where readers thought the plan was vague, adding a number of new actions to the plan that describe better what we are going to achieve and our aims and objectives and explaining why each ambition is important for the council to deliver against. Overview and scrutiny management board received the report on 9th of December. Their comments can be seen in appendix two, along with action that's being taken to address these points. We will continue to measure progress in achieving our ambitions, objectives and priorities through our performance framework. The report and reports to share this publicly through quarterly performance reporting. The recommendation is set out in paragraph seven, which is for council to consider and approve the updated council plan. Thank you.
Can I have a mover to the report councillor Hopgood?
Thank you Chair. Can I thank Steve for the report and his team, plus all the officers and elected members involved in updating the council plan. Since June 2022, council has received an updated and refreshed council plan on an annual basis, alongside the MTFP and budget-setting reports. This is the fourth review since that decision was taken. The council is responsible for a wide range of public services and has a significant role to play in improving the lives of everyone who lives in, visits or works in County Durham. We know that our county has both opportunities and issues that need to be addressed and like all local authorities, we also face financial challenges. It is therefore vital that we set out our strategic direction and priorities that will enable us to use our finances well and deliver the best possible services locally. Many of our issues cannot be solved by the council alone and as such, this administration recognises the critical importance of working in partnership with others across the public, private, voluntary and community sectors. This is why the council plan also sets out our part in delivering the County Durham vision 2035, which was developed in partnership. The updated council plan covering the period 2025 to 2029 does not and could not include a list of everything we do, so it is underpinned by a wide range of specific strategies and service-specific action plans. That said, as a direct result of the consultation, this year's plan does provide more detail about what the council is going to do to achieve its ambitions. Our focus as a council remains steady and as such, like last year, the plan sets out our ambitions to support our economy, our people, our environment, our communities and to further improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our council for everyone's benefits. However, we must ensure our resources continue to be used in a transparent and effective way and in line with the medium-term financial plan. In his introduction, Steve mentioned the LGA corporate peer challenge, which takes place later this year. This will put more focus on the quality of our strategic planning. This process is informed by the government's best value standards, which state that well-functioning councils provide quality leadership by setting a clearly articulated, achievable and prioritised vision for officers to follow. The vision must also put place and local people at its heart. This plan does that and therefore sets out how we intend to drive forward improvements across our county. Over the last year, this council has focused on delivering things that matter to local people and local communities and we have achieved a lot, but as a council, we will face ongoing challenges in 2025, driven by increasing demand for council services whilst resources remain scarce. As such, we must prioritise, allocate resources carefully and ensure we deliver. This plan provides the common denominator for those functions. Chair, with that, I move the council accepts the report and the recommendations to approve the council plan 2025 to 29. Thank you.
Can I have a second to the report councillor Bell?
Thank you Chair. Can I also thank Mr Evans and his team for the work undertaken to refresh the council plan we're considering today, which sets out the actions we will lead on and take forward. It is aligned to the medium-term financial plan and supports the County Durham vision 2035. It also sets out clearly the achievements of this council, which are all directed at supporting the people and communities of this great council to flourish. I'm also pleased that the council, through its consultation, has clearly listened to the views of our communities and local businesses and with that, I second the report and move the recommendations to approve the council plan.
Thank you councillor. Does any member... oh sorry, are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks Chair, there's a couple of points for me to deal with this. I think the timing of this is quite shocking really. We're weeks away before many of us will go back to the public with an opportunity to put what our offer would be to the public and the public will basically decide on a new make-up for this council in a matter of weeks. So I think, you know, spending much-needed resources and time pulling together a refreshed plan, you know, has been fairly needless. It should have been bumped down the road until after the elections, that's just my opinion. Nevertheless Chair, I mean, we won't vote against the plan today. I appreciate the work that Steve and the council officers have done in engaging the public, but I do want to highlight a couple of issues that I have with it because, I mean, basically the description that's been given of the run of this council by the leader and the deputy leader, I think is in a bit of a parallel universe to the one that I live in, in Stanley and the communities that I represent. I think for one, the council plan, it doesn't do anything to deal with the failures of this council to deliver for all residents of the county, whether you live in Durham city or not and I think that's a big shame, it's a crying missed opportunity that we haven't built on those proud traditions and the opportunities that have come with our outlying villagers. I think Chair, there's a number of major issues that we'll put to the electorate and look to bring forward in a new county planning mayor that this council plan simply doesn't go far enough on. That includes improving community safety, dealing with the menace of off-road bikes, creating good local jobs, which I think, you know, you see what's happened with Acrely Heads with those jobs going down from 5,000 Heads with those jobs going down from 5,000, four-year ago, to only 3,000 this week. The ambition's just not good enough for our communities, Chair, in my opinion. And I think this plan does nothing to reassure a resident in County Durham that things are going to change any time soon. I think, for me, housing's a major issue. There's not enough in the housing strategy. We voiced our concerns on that, and again, that's not really articulated in this plan. And I think the ability to deal with the tragic state of our roads with potholes and creators appearing all over the county is just absolutely disgusting. No talk in here about investing in new technologies, Chair.
One minute, councillor.
You know, summarised, Chair, there's a whole host of things that this doesn't do, not least putting decision-making back into local communities out of county hall. In fact, we've had the opposite under this council over the past four years. So for me, I would prefer to see a council plan that start to put County Durham first above the politics that we've had to endure over the past four years, and that's the big missed opportunity, Chair. So I'd like all that noted in the minutes. I think when Labour come back here in May, the first thing we will do is bring forward a revised plan that sets more ambition for our county and a better opportunity to take forward our outlying communities, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mark Wilkes?
Good morning, Chair. This council plan was discussed in December at scrutiny at length. Councillor Marshall wasn't in attendance and didn't send a substitute. To suggest that a plan is needless is a bit odd, considering that we didn't even have an economic plan for over a decade from the Labour group. I don't believe that it's right to delay our ambitions. I think it's wrong to suggest that we shouldn't renew our plan each year. I think it's essential because we're making sure that we do what we need to for our residents. So unlike Councillor Marshall, I do think this council should have a plan. It does have a plan, and I think everyone should be supporting it today, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Wilkes. Councillor Hopgood, would you like a write-up reply?
Yeah. I think, I don't know why I'm shocked every time I hear the leader of the opposition speak with a new set of figures that don't exist. But 3,000, there's much more than 3,000 jobs, 5,000, you know that was a made-up figure. Off-road bike, and the last time I looked was a police issue, but as this plan says, we work quite clearly in partnership with everyone. And as I said when I spoke, this comes every year and comes to this meeting and has done for the last four years. This council cannot stand still and stop because of an election. We have to have business as usual and there has to be something to work from. So I do hope that council does agree to support this plan today, and more so because everything that was fed in through consultation from those people cross-party who did choose to attend scrutiny and who did have input has been incorporated within it. So thank you, Chair, and I again move to move it.
Thank you, councillor. I'll hand over to Helen. There will be a vote on this, and Helen will explain the vote.
Sorry, Chair, just a point of clarification. I haven't heard anybody in the chamber object to it, so I don't know whether you need a vote.
Sorry, councillor Marshall, I interpreted some of your comments as being potential dissent, so...
Sorry, can I just clarify that? I mean, what I did say at the very beginning is, we're not going to hold this up. We'll bring something new back after May, is what I said. For all I don't agree with the content, we don't want to delay it.
Councillors, can we agree this without a vote? Thank you. We move on to item nine, the Budget 2025-26, report under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report fulfils our statutory responsibilities under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003, which states that when an authority is considering its budget and setting its council tax for the forthcoming year, its chief finance officer, that's me, is required to give their professional opinion on two things. Firstly, the robustness of the estimates made in the preparation of the budget and for the purpose of calculating what is known as the council tax requirement. And secondly, the adequacy of reserves allowed in that budget process and in these budget proposals. As the chief finance officer for this council, the arrangements I have put in place to discharge these responsibilities and my professional opinion on these matters is something which I take incredibly seriously. This report is one of the most important reports that I present to you. It helps give you the assurance you need in terms of relying on the figures and the underpinning assumptions that have formed the basis of the budget proposals you will consider shortly. Included in the report is an overview of your legal responsibilities as members to facilitate the setting of a balanced budget and the implications of not doing so. This is set out in appendix two, and members will note that you jointly and severally, that is collectively and individually, have a fiduciary responsibility to local council taxpayers. This means that you have a legal duty to facilitate, rather than obstruct, the setting of a lawful budget, and you must exercise that duty by the 11th of March at the very latest. In terms of the robustness of the estimates, I have set out in sections 24 to 51 of the report, the process that has been followed and some of the key issues underpinning the budgets and the reports to be considered today. The budget proposals presented today are the end of a long, difficult and in-depth process, and I'm happy to give my opinion that based on the work undertaken, the estimates that are included in the reports can be considered to be robust and can be relied upon when taking your decisions today, and that adequate provision has been made for all known risks with contingencies and sufficient reserves in place for any unforeseen events that may transpire during the coming year. In the report, I've highlighted the significant inflationary pressures we are facing and the uncertainty that exists beyond 2526 in terms of our future financial settlements as we await the outcome of the upcoming comprehensive spending review and equally importantly, the outcome of the planned fair funding review that the government have now commenced. I have highlighted the scale of the financial challenges we are facing in terms of balancing our budget across the coming years, with the budget next year once again relying on the use of the MTFP Support Reserve to set a balanced budget at broadly the same level as in the current year. As members will note, after factoring in the additional grant funding we will receive next year, which includes some specific grant funding allocations, the council is facing a budget challenge of around £21.5 million to balance its budget before we consider new MTFP savings. The MTFP factors in around £18 million of additional savings next year, and the council maximising its council tax raising powers, and yet we are still £3.5 million short of balancing our budget. Across the four-year MTFP planning period and factoring in the savings proposal set out in the report for next year and beyond, the assumption on future council tax increases, the council faces a budget deficit or additional savings requirement of £45.8 million, with £23.4 million of this falling into 2627, which will pose a significant challenge in terms of balancing the budget the year after next. In terms of the adequacy of reserves, I've set out in sections 52 to 79 of the report details of the best practice guidance published by SIPF in terms of the level, purpose and reasons for holding reserves. I've included in this part of the report the council's position in terms of the SIPF Financial Resilience Index, which are a series of indicators that are used as an early warning system for authorities in financial distress. What these indicators show is that the council, relative to other councils of our type and size, has overall levels of reserves in line with the national average. The council's reserves level at the 31st of March 24, excluding schools and public health, represents around 41% of the council's net revenue budget, which is a reduction on the previous year-end, when the overall levels of reserves held were 44% of the council's net revenue budget. There is a comparative table at paragraph 63 setting out the movement in reserves over the last four years. In the current year, our forecasts indicate there will be a further £18 million reduction in reserves this year. The report identifies the risks and issues associated with the high needs deficit position, where the cumulative deficit at the 31st of March this year is forecast to be around £24 million, rising to £38 million by the end of the coming financial year. Members will note that the exceptional accounting override, which allows these deficits to be accumulated without impacting on the general fund, is due to expire in 2627, as things stand, which could see these deficits crystallising in the general fund, which if not fully funded, would cause significant financial distress across this council and across the wider sector. The budget proposal you are about to consider includes the utilisation of £3.5 million of the MTFP Support Reserve to balance the budget next year. The MTFP Support Reserve balance after the application of that £3.5 million will be just over £29 million. However, we will need to review this at the year-end, as there will be a need to transfer some sums to the General Reserve at the year-end to ensure we maintain compliance with the reserves policy agreed by council. The shortfall and top-up to the General Reserve will be around £4.4 million at year end. As members will be aware, utilising reserves to balance recurrent expenditure is not a long-term sustainable strategy. The use of £3.5 million of the MTFP Support Reserve to balance the budget next year will, however, buy the council and the cabinet more time to develop more sustainable budget solutions for implementation from 2627 onwards. I am satisfied that there is appropriate and proportionate systems in place, and I have confidence that the more sustainable budget solutions will be developed over the coming months, particularly as the transformation programme is delivered. The recommended policy on reserves, taking all of these factors into account, is set out at paragraph 76, and I'm wholly satisfied that earmarked reserves have been set aside for specific legitimate purposes. I would note that the fall in reserves in recent years has primarily been in earmarked reserves, as these reserves have been expended on the purpose of which they were set aside or been reclassified as corporate reserves. In conclusion, Chair, in my professional opinion, if the council were to accept the Cabinet's budget proposals, including its proposals on council tax increases next year, which are in line with the government's expectations, then I am satisfied that the risks identified in the budget setting process, alongside our strong track record of managing the council's finances, mean that despite the clear challenges that come ahead in the next four years, we will have adequate reserves as we move forward through our overall resilience has reduced somewhat in recent years. The recommendations are set out in paragraph nine, which are for council to have regard to this report and my views when considering and approving the budget and the levels of council tax increases for 2526. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, can I ask, are there any questions on the report? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Chair, and it is a question. However, there's a touch of context in terms of what I'm going to ask. So just obviously thank Paul for this detailed report and totally respect the comments that's within the report and appreciate the hard work that goes into it. With reference to paragraph 29, 30, 31 and page 123, where you identify the general fund reserve of 5% to 7% as based on assessment of risk in the revenue budget, you state as early as quarter two, an overall overspend, and especially in children and young people services, there was a predicted overspend, and that was considered by Cabinet, who agreed to use the medium-term financial plan support fund to balance the books. Therefore, what I'm interested in is this. In your professional opinion, which, as I've said, I fully respect, what level of risk does this action pose to reserves, the medium-term financial plan and the setting of a balanced budget in future years? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you for your question. In the report, it is a balanced judgement, so it's taken into account not only the risks around our children looked after placements budget, but other risks that are prevalent within the budget. The council's budget does include an element of contingencies, there are prudent provisions, and what I would say is that the overspend in the current year in terms of children and young people services has been a material factor on the budget increases that we factored in for 2526 and beyond. You'll see that there's budget growth in the children looked after placements budget of £16.6 million next year. So in terms of edging off that risk and factor, that is now factored into the base budget from 2526. The level of reserves, as I've set out in the section 25 report, are sufficient to cover off risks over and above that. We believe we've built in sufficient budget growth and capacity within the children looked after budget next year to accommodate not only the current year overspend and the full year effect of what has been an increased number of children in care and the costs of those placements for those children in care, but based on some very detailed work we did across the summer to model what the potential to a demographic growth and further cost pressures that will come over the next sort of 18 months, we factored those into the budget. So I'm satisfied that we've made prudent provision and that the reserves position, even with the transfer to the General Reserve to maintain compliance with our policy requirements, there'll be sufficient in the MTFP Support Reserve to see us through to the next few years.
Councillor Michelle Walton?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Paul. My question relates to paragraph 276. Paul, could you confirm, so under the previous government, we were pledged as part of the devolution deal, 72.8 million of new additional transport-related funding, but now we're only getting 23 million? And then could you also confirm that because of that, what schemes across our county will now not be proceeding because the current government has failed to honour that pledge? Thank you.
Councillors, can I just remind us all that we are asking questions on the 2025-26 report under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair, just to confirm it is on this item, the question. Paul, can I just thank you and all of the finance staff for the hard work you've done on the budget this year and for the support you've given our group in scrutinising it? I know it's been a lot of time and effort from you all. The question, Chair, was just directly relating to that deadline that Paul mentioned of the 11th of March, and I wondered if you could just confirm that the officers have arrangements in place if there's no agreement on the budget that's in front of us today to be able to bring an alternative budget back to full council before that deadline on the 11th of March? Thanks, Chair. Yes, I can confirm, as with every year, we do have some contingency arrangements. We deliberately have the council budget set and meet in sort of in advance of that statutory deadline to provide for that sort of eventuality. So yes, if the budget wasn't agreed today, council would be reconvened, insufficient time to be able to meet that statutory deadline, and at that point Helen and I will lock the door and you can't get out of this room until you do agree the budget.
Thank you, councillors. There are no more questions. Does anyone, does any member wish to speak on the report? Nope. Can I ask the council to have regard to this report and the opinions set out in it when considering and approving the budget and the level of council tax for 2025-26? Before we move on to the next item, can I remind the council that under paragraph 14.6 of the council procedure rules, recorded votes will take place for each of the budget and council tax items? Councillor Hopgood?
Chair, agenda items 10 and 11 in relation to the budget and council tax setting are inextricably linked. Therefore, in accordance with council procedure rule 11c, I move a motion without notice that items 10 and 11 are considered together.
Councillor, can I have a second?
Second the motion, Chair.
Second the motion, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Does the council agree the motion to take the two items together? Thank you. Members, before we move on to the next item, please remember to be respectful to each other during this debate. Thank you. I'm going to hand over to Helen.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. Considering the two items together impacts upon the length of time which some members can speak, for some members it will double the time for the which they are able to speak. So the mover of any motions and all group leaders have ten minutes, seconders unless a group leader will have six minutes, and the chair has agreed that councillor Crute, as the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, can speak for six minutes in presenting the feedback from scrutiny on the two items. All of the speakers will have three minutes to speak, and then the leader will have a right of reply for six minutes before we vote on items ten and eleven, and as the chair has indicated, that will be a recorded vote on both items, and there will be two separate votes. The deadline for amendments was noon on the fourteenth of February twenty twenty five, and none were received. Amendments received after that deadline are only accepted in exceptional circumstances with the agreement of the chair, the section one five one officer, and myself as monitoring officer. No amendments have been received at this point. The usual rules of debate apply. Each member can speak once on the motions, and as I've already said, the chair, the, the leader is the mover of the original motion, gets the right of reply at the end of the debate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So item ten and eleven, medium term financial plan twenty twenty five, twenty six to twenty twenty eight, twenty nine, and capital and tax setting in order to meet the county council's council tax requirement for twenty five, twenty six. Can I ask the leader of the council to present and move the reports?
Chair, I'm pleased to present and move the cabinet's budget proposals for twenty five, twenty six, and to outline the medium term financial plan. This report is the culmination of months and months of hard work, with four detailed reports considered by the cabinet in the lead up to today. At each stage, we have sought to involve scrutiny in the budget setting process. The notes of the most recent meeting on the thirteenth of February have been circulated under separate cover. The report includes the details of the two rounds of budget, budget consultation through our area action partnerships and through engagement with business rate payers and with trade unions, plus other partners and stakeholders across the autumn of last year and into January this year. The budget has once again been prepared against a backdrop of significant inflationary and demand pressures in our budgets, particularly in our statutory social care and home to school transport services, not least of which is a result of the six point seven per cent increase in the national living wage, but also because of the changes to employers' national insurance costs from April. All of these pressures are unavoidable, but they soak up what limited resources we have available. The report provides a comprehensive overview of the budget pressures we are facing, the announcements made in the autumn statement in October last year, and in the local government finance settlement. Members will see that the council has benefited from forty eight point eight million pounds of additional government funding next year, with nineteen million of this being targeted funding with associated spending requirements. The net increase in core funding is therefore thirty million, of which around fourteen million is the new recovery grant, which is claimed to be the start of the new government's commitment to redistributing and rebalancing the local government funding regime from twenty six, twenty seven. Let's hope that proves to be the case. The budget pressures we face next year total eighty five point eight million, with significant uplifts required in our statutory social care services of thirty four and a half million next year, well in excess of the additional social care grant we will receive from government and from the income we can generate from an adult social care precept locally. Put simply, pressures vastly outweigh funding increases. The council also has to pay the increased national insurance costs, and very disappointingly, we have not been fully compensated from these increases. Instead, we are faced with a three point eight million pound budget pressure, as the eight point two million of increase in costs is not being fully offset by the additional grant funding we will receive next year. Also included in the budget next year is around nine million pound from an assumed three per cent pay award, and an additional three million pounds uplift to our home to school transport budgets, as well as a further four hundred thousand pound to cover the shortfall of housing benefit subsidy in relation to temporary and specialist supported housing, effectively a cost shunt from the D W P to local authorities, taking that cost of this to the Durham taxpayer to three million pound next year, something we have and will continue to lobby strongly on, as it's simply not fair. Whilst the vast majority of the spending pressures we face next year are unavoidable, there are some limited policy led investments factored into the base budget, including a one point one million pound investment in our send teams to increase capacity and our ability to deal with the increase in education, health and social care plans, and a three million pounds time limited investment in our transformation programme. Of course, with huge cost pressures allied with the level of uncertainty that exists beyond next year, we have had to think carefully about discretionary spending and the affordability of our capital programme. Across the MTFP planning period, we have made provision for an additional fifteen point seven million pounds of additional annual borrowing costs, thirteen million of which is linked to borrowing commitments against the current capital programme. Like every member in this chamber, there are many things we'd like to do, but we only have limited resources available, and we've had to make some difficult choices with regards to new capital investments. The budget proposals do include a hundred and fifty nine million of new capital investments funded with a combination of new additional government grant, new prudential borrowing, and new self financed prudential borrowing, plus some use of reserves. The new capital spending commitments include a fifty five million pound investment in the acquisition of the Melbourne Gate development on a fully self financed basis, significant continued investment in highways and bridges infrastructure of forty nine million, investment in net park of twelve point seven million in anticipation of a major inward investment opportunity, investment in the capitalised maintenance of our buildings of eight million pound, increases in our demolitions budget of four million to deal with the demolition of County Hall and other surplus buildings across the county, a two million pound investment in our looked after children sufficiency strategy to increase in house provision, and a five point seven million pounds investment in our digital infrastructure. Our capital programme would have been around fifty million pounds higher had this government honoured the commitments given by the previous government in terms of the additional transport capital grant we were due to receive. The loss of that fifty million pounds of funding will mean we will only be able to deliver less than a third of the schemes we were planning on delivering over the next two years. The uncertainty over our funding settlements from twenty six, twenty seven onwards casts an ominous shadow over our medium term financial planning. The government has committed to undertaking a comprehensive spending review and providing a multi year settlement from twenty six, twenty seven, and as part of this, they will undertake a fundamental review of the formula used to allocate funding to each authority, stating that greater weight will be put on council tax raising capacity and on needs driven by higher levels of deprivation. I welcome these announcements, as should we all, but let's not kid ourselves. The government are in a difficult place in terms of the national finances, so I doubt whether investment in the sector, a non protected government department at the moment, that is so badly need, will be forthcoming. We will have to wait and see how the review takes shape and how quickly changes are brought in, but the sooner the better from our perspective. I'd like to thank everyone involved in the consultation exercises that were undertaken this year. The feedback we've received as updated for the deliberations by the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board is set out in detail in the report. As the budget report sets out, we simply cannot raise sufficient income from council tax to fund the cost pressures we face, and under the current formula, the government is not meeting the gap, meaning we are constantly having to find savings just to stand still. This is ultimately not sustainable for the sector and will need to be addressed by government. We are unfortunately in a constant spiral of finding savings to balance the budget, and it's getting harder and harder as the years go by. The additional funding we will receive from government next year is significant and to be welcomed, but is simply not enough. The funding gap we face next year before consideration of savings proposals is twenty one and a half million. That is the gap between the funding we receive and the revenue we can raise locally and the spending pressures we need to accommodate next year. The budget proposals include council tax increases in line with the government's expectations. They take into account the council tax core referendum limits and adult social care precepting powers, which are for an additional two per cent next year. The clear expectation from government is that these increases are applied, and the recommendation from our section one five one officer is that we implement these increases. Not implementing them means bigger reductions in spending in future years. Increasing the council tax is a decision that should not be taken lightly, and in considering this, we must recognise the squeeze on the cost of living at this time. However, not increasing council tax is simply not a sustainable or prudent strategy to adopt, and as the section one five one officer outlined earlier, every member in this chamber has a responsibility to set a balanced budget. Every one per cent of council tax increase applied generates around two point nine million pounds of additional funding for the council to sustain vital local services. To put it bluntly, it's a binary choice between increasing the council tax or increasing the scale of the budget deficit and the savings and efficiency. Let's be clear, that cuts would be required in future years. Assuming that council does agree the council tax increase set out in the report and the savings proposals are agreed and delivered, then the budget shortfall next year will be three and a half million. As is always the case, the estimates beyond next year are more indicative and will undoubtedly change. It is important to note that we still have our council tax reduction scheme and proud to protect those who are least able to, to pay. It is important that we follow the advice of our section one five one officer in terms of the sufficiency of our reserves. Those councils that don't listen to their statutory officer advice have found themselves in real difficulty, and that's not a position we want to be in. The report includes details of the various dedicated schools block funding allocations, including the schools block, high needs block, central block, D S G funding allocations. The recommendations are summarised at paragraph forty three, and I can confirm that they satisfy our statutory requirements with regards to the budget setting, including the adoption of the pay policy, which is a requirement of the Localism Act and is set out at appendix fourteen, the capital strategy and the various budgetary management reports. Chair, I move the recommendation of both reports, and in doing so, would like to place on record my thanks to Paul and his team and budget managers right across the council. Thank you.
Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Bill?
Thank you, Chair, second the reports and recommendations, but reserve the right to speak at the end of the debate after other contributions.
Thank you, councillor. Before I bring in the Chair of Overview and Scrutiny Management Board and open the debate, do any members have any questions of the Corporate Director of Resources on the proposals outlined in items ten and eleven? Councillor Walton, you may want to re-ask your question.
Thank you, Chair, I do like to get a practice in. So, Paul, thank you very much again for your report. So just paragraph two seventy six, which is on page two two four, could you confirm that under the previous government, we were pledged as part of the devolution deal seventy two point eight million of new additional transport related funding, so the C R S T S, but now we're only getting twenty three million? And can you say which schemes across our county will now not be able to go ahead because the current government has failed to honour that pledge? Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, councillor Walton. Yes, I can confirm that around about this time last year, the council did receive an allocation of what was called local transport funding at, at that point, of seventy two, of the seventy two million that you referred to. The autumn statement was silent on that allocation, and it was only at the end of January that we were confirmed that rather than a local transport fund allocation, we were, the combined authority were going to be allocated an extra twenty three million pound of city regional sustainable transport settlement funding, which is the same, it is transport funding, which was earmarked for County Durham. So, so yes, in, in, in absolute terms, the seventy two million pound is now a twenty three million pound commitment from the current government. In terms of the second part of your question, all of the schemes, we, we put forward a whole range of schemes in terms of transport investment requirements across the county into the, the regional, regional transport plan. There were obviously a number of those that would potentially have been funded through the L T F funding, had that sort of come through, but final decisions on which of those schemes we are looking to bring forward over the next two financial years from the twenty three million pound are still to be taken, there's discussions and sort of cabinet decisions still to be required on that. The twenty three million pound is ring fenced for, for County Durham, but a final schedule, therefore, what was on potentially in the original schedule versus this one is, you know, something I can't answer at this point, because we have final decisions on what will constitute the twenty three haven't been taken.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jake Miller?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Paul, I wonder if we could just ask, well, whether, I could just ask, do we know where that money from the previous government was actually coming from and whether that was budgeted for?
You can ask, but I don't know. The answer, I guess, so we did have a letter from the, so the, the D F T to, to allocate that, that funding around about this time last year, as, as I said. There was, I don't know how the government was funding that, where it featured in their, sort of their budget, all we had is the sort of an allocation from the previous government. Just as similarly, we don't know exactly how the, the government are funding the, the existing twenty three million, other than it's within their sort of spending plans.
Thank you, councillors. Now we move into debate, can I invite councillor Rob Crute to speak as the Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board?
Thank you, Chair. As members will be aware, it's a key priority for the management board to scrutinise the budget and M T F T, MTFP process, and I'm pleased to report we've been able to do that again constructively and diligently this year. The board's received four cabinet reports in October and December last year, last month, and again just last week, and on each occasion, we fed our views back. At our last meeting held on the thirteenth of February, we undertook detailed and final scrutiny of the cabinet's final budget proposals. The board had a detailed and robust debate over the plans, and the points raised by the board are set out in the supplementary paper, attaches an addendum at item ten on this morning's agenda. This morning, though, I'd like to highlight a number of concerns raised by the board during the scrutiny of the process. Members noted the continued single year local finance settlement, but were cautiously optimistic at the government's commitment to carry out a comprehensive spending review and to introduce a multi year finance settlement from April twenty twenty six. Members also welcomed the government's forthcoming fair funding review, which reflects the government's commitment to redistribute funding on a more equitable basis by placing an emphasis on need, deprivation, and council tax raising capacity. Members noted, however, that the anticipated level of representations from local authorities elsewhere, who may be adversely affected by those changes, may result in a revised methodology which could delay or even deflect the government's commitment to introduce much needed additional funding through multi year financial settlements. Members welcomed the significantly increased local government funding allocation included this year, which is predicated on a continued government assumption that councils will raise council tax by the maximum permitted level. The increase to national insurance employee contributions remains a concern for the council, both in terms of its direct costs as an employer, but also relating to those commissioned services within areas like adult and children's social care services delivered by third party organisations. Members were disappointed that the government has not fully reimbursed the cost to the council of these increases. The board made reference to the proposed M T F P fifteen allocation in respect of the Melbourne Gate development in Durham city centre, and in particular, the significant potential risk to the council in committing public finances to deliver a failed private development. Whilst acknowledging the potential benefits of this scheme, it was noted there were a number of modelling assumptions that could significantly impact the proposal, and along with it, the likelihood of any deliverable benefits in terms of occupancy levels and rental income. Reflecting on some delays experienced in delivering major capital projects and the additional cost to the council of these delays, members were concerned that the complexities surrounding the Melbourne Gate project could result in an even greater financial pressure for the council in respect of its M T A F P sixteen and beyond in terms of increased capital financing costs. The board questioned the linkages, expressed... The board questioned the linkages expressed within the cabinet report regarding the delivery of the leisure transformation programme, specifically the commitment for two new build leisure centres at Seum and at Chesterley Street. The report suggests that the cabinet remains committed to these developments, but we recognise that this could be impacted by the potential occupancy rates and income levels generated by the Melbourne Gate project, which raises questions of course about whether these projects will ever be deliverable. Members of the board expressed significant concern that the proposed capital programme appears to be disproportionately focused on Durham city centre at the expense of towns and villages elsewhere in County Durham. It was feared that these towns and villages, which some are already considered to be left behind, are likely to suffer even further inequity of access to decent housing, transport and other vital public services if funding isn't redistributed more fairly in future. Reference was made to the extensive use of reserves to balance the council's budget over the last three years and on behalf of the board, I would seek assurances that the council's level of reserves would be maintained at such prudent levels as recommended by the council section one five one officer and by SIFRA. In summary, Chair, the MDFP was seen by board members to be good in some parts, but not too good in others. Looking forward, it was welcomed that the government has provided the council with over forty-eight million pounds in additional funding this year. But members acknowledged that the damaging impact of fourteen years of austerity at the hands of the previous government simply can't be addressed in just one settlement. We will need additional and sustained central government funding support over several years if we are to make real progress and that underlines the importance of the government's forthcoming fair funding review in redistributing wealth more fairly than where it's needed most. Critically, it was noted that our lobbying of government must be strong and relentless if we hold the government out to pledge to use future funding formula based on need, something that would be of significant benefit to our communities if delivered as the government intends. Finally, Chair, the board recommended to cabinet that a full inquiry should be undertaken in respect of the Melbourne Gate project from its inception through to delivery. That's the summary of the management board's comments on the budget process, Chair. I look forward to the budget having early involvement in the budget consultation process in future years. And before I wind up, I would like to thank the finance officers and the scrutiny officers for their support in scrutinising the budget and the MDFP process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Councillor Chris Hood?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. It was actually, it was going to be a question for Paul, but I think I missed the deadline, but I think I'll be able to sum it up. There was a comment made by the leader of the opposition within his statement just regarding the budget of asked Paul if there was arrangements in place by the eleventh of March, sorry, before the eleventh of March, that if full council don't agree the budget, that officers would bring an alternate budget. Just to clarify regarding the constitution, three point three point two states the council's budget will be proposed by the cabinet on the advice of the chief finance officer and will be approved by full council. And then three point three point three states, the full council may amend the proposed budget or ask the cabinet to reconsider it before approving it. There's nothing saying that if budget isn't approved yet and considering there hasn't been any amendments, that's stating that the officers need to go away and amend the budget. Councillor Marshall's statement was that the officers would go away and amend the budget. Is that correct? My point, sorry, Chair, the point is, is that this budget being set, agreed by cabinet, approved by the chief financial officer, there's been no amendments quite clearly stated. It's not a case of if budget isn't voted for today, that the officers then go away and do a whole load more work, it's up to cabinet to agree or disagree. Thank you.
Councillor, can I bring Helen in here just to clarify the situation?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's just perhaps helpful to clarify what would happen in the event council doesn't agree the budget today. So, we would, at the conclusion of the vote, confirming that we would need to take a few minutes just to capture the high-level objections from council to the budget as to why it couldn't be accepted, so that we are clear what the objections are that cabinet would need to take away and consider and we would reconvene, we would convene a fresh meeting of cabinet to consider those objections. Cabinet at that meeting will decide whether or not to accept any of those objections and whether or not they wish to make any amendments to the budget, which would then come back to another meeting of council to be presented. So, it could be exactly the same budget that we have today or it could be slightly altered in light of those objections. It is the cabinet's budget that's put forward, but clearly they are supported in that regard by officers as they have been to get to this point today.
Are there any members wishing to speak? Councillor Martin?
Thought there would have been a big queue. Okay, I'm happy to go, I'm happy to chip in there near the front, Chair, if that makes life helpful for everyone. Chair, first off, it's really good to see the Labour Government recognising need and that the government moves swiftly to begin to redress the balance and secure a fairer deal for people in County Durham. Our Labour groups work really hard to ensure the new government understands our low council tax base, is aware of the pressures we face as a direct result of fourteen years of austerity and appreciates the scale of the cuts that we've had to endure. Securing forty-eight million in new cash from government is an unexpected but welcomed investment in our council. To put that into context, it's the most new investment we've had from any government in more than fourteen years. The government delivered this investment despite a difficult and restrictive national picture because it knows how much we've had stripped from us, first by a Tory Lib Dem coalition government and then by the Conservatives. Chair, it's no coincidence the government now listens to us. Our county is now championed by Labour MPs, a Labour mayor, a Labour Police and Crime Commissioner and a strong united Labour group. All people focused on delivering more, securing more funds and to help the area reach its undoubted potential. And we must continue to work together to ensure we receive a fair funding review and a longer-term settlement that ensures the council can deal directly with the issues and challenges we face this year, next year and beyond. I'm very much looking forward to building on our relationship with the government, bringing ministers here to demonstrate what we can achieve with greater support and securing additional resources to give us the means to take the county forward. The county, the region, the country face a daunting task, recovering from fourteen years of chaotic government, but we will recover and with the right leadership in County Durham will thrive. So, that brings us on to the fourth Tory Lib Dem independent budget, but the first under a Labour government. Chair, this is a budget so bad that the Lib Dems don't even want anything to do with it. This is the Lib Dem focus leaflet from Concert, leave it to yours Catherine. Labour hike up council tax, I think that's the job of the people in this chamber this morning. But Chair, it has changed since last year when councillor Martin and Lib Dem members in Herecliff were putting leaflets out blaming the Tory government for hiking up the council tax. In fact, it's rather ironic they've been in bed with them here in County Hall for the past four years and backed them to the hill. It's always someone else's fault, never theirs, Chair. I watched this morning vote with interest, who's going to raise their hand to back this shambles in front of us this morning? Chair, setting a budget is our, this council's legal responsibility and that includes setting the council tax, it's not the government's. The coalition's been busily in the groundwork for yet another tax rise, it's fourth in as many years with plans for another year. I have to say, Chair, I must admire their optimism that they think they're going to get their hands anywhere near next year's budget. So, let's dispense with the flip-flopping, the not our fault, the finger-pointing of the Lib Dems, Tories and independents, when they all know increasing council tax yet again is their choice and their choice only. Chair, they've got to own that. However, we all have a vote today on the budget, a budget that maxes out council tax while pleading poverty, a budget by a coalition that's blown council savings to bankroll running costs, a council that's maxed out the council's credit card. If this council was a resident in County Durham, Chair, I would dare say the bailiffs would already be knocking at the door. This budget's an absolute disaster for our community, another missed opportunity by the people who've spent four years squandering reserves, ducking difficult decisions, sweeping their mess under the carpet for Labour to clear up come May. They've created a council with no delivery, budgets overrun and a capital programme that saddles this council and the taxpayers with one billion pounds worth of debt for the next forty years. It doesn't have to be like this, Chair. It's time to start putting communities in County Durham first. The council should start by putting people ahead of their own political preferences, start making decisions based on the needs of our communities, focusing on solving problems rather than putting them off until they become someone else's issue. Look at the facts, in two years this council have a billion pounds worth of debt and have burned through twenty-two per cent of reserves, taking them below the recommended threshold. Money wasted, things like the new bus station in Durham city, five million over budget, leisure transformation over budget, the store, Chair, over budget, a new bus station in Bishop Walken that isn't needed or wanted and a council ploughs more money into a restaurant and art gallery at Aitney Heads, a project putting another financial millstone around the community's neck for years to come. It doesn't end there, Chair. County Hall's costing the taxpayers six millions pound a year to run, the council's literally wasting ten thousand litres of water a week and the environmental impact for stealing this building in relation to carbon emissions is extortionate, literally pouring taxpayers' money down the drain to stay in this outdated building. The last administration, Chair, gift-wrapped an opportunity for new jobs and development across Aitney Heads, but by not vacating County Hall and flogging off the purpose-built HQ, the council missed a once-in-a-generation opportunity to generate millions of jobs, millions of pounds in business rates, Chair, and sorry, the millions of, sorry, millions of pounds in business rates and rents and deliver over five thousand jobs in this site. Instead, what we've got is council employees rattling around a near derelict eyesore with other staff scattered in the winds and the total jobs ambition downgraded a mere couple of thousand. And so many unanswered questions, Chair. Is it true the council hasn't created the space required for Atom Bank, our signature company in Durham city, to keep it in Durham? And has this flagship success for our county, will it leave the county, taking the five hundred jobs with it? This council's failed to manage its capital spend, Chair, failed to live within its means, failed to secure the jobs and investment required for growth and the result is a huge cost to the taxpayers and a fourth council tax hike in four years. We've endured two hundred and seventy million of cuts from a Tory government, we've lost three thousand staff and with it, the quality of what we can deliver has plummeted, all while poverty increases across the county and life expectancy falls. Where's the recognition we need to address this? Where's the desire to grow? Where's the money to enhance and improve the safety of our communities across the county? Where's the plans for investing new technology, new ways of working, innovation? How are we going to tackle the menace of off-road bikes that are plaguing many of our communities around the county? And Chair, how are we planning on dealing with the social housing crisis, which leaves thirteen and a half thousand residents in County Durham waiting for a house? All we're having here is increased fees on pest control, more job cuts to frontline environmental services and more debt. Chair, that brings us to Melbourne Gate. More chaos the council expects a taxpayer and residents across the county to foot the bill for. Fifty-five million to clear up this council's mess, one point two million this council's wasted in legal fees, suing their own developer, preventing the developer getting on with the scheme at no cost to taxpayer and appoint a new construction company to finish it off. Chair, so many unanswered questions, what went wrong? And I look forward to a full public review of this and hopefully the leader will agree to that as soon as possible. Labour handed over a development that was only six months away from completion, just purely hasn't been delivered. The investment and over a hundred million of other projects in the capital programme for Durham city alone, no investment for outlined villages and all while pleading poverty to the public and hiking up the taxes once again, this is absolutely unacceptable to our communities and residents across the county, Chair. The public should not have to repeatedly pay for the mistakes of this council. This coalition acts with impunity, expecting residents to pick up the tab, that must enter date, it's not monopoly money, Chair, it's our community's money. We have a county of world heritage sites, including Roland countryside, a beautiful coastline, a potentially vibrant city and towns and villages with very proud history that could offer an awful lot more. We have space for homes, businesses and creating things that people enjoy to make lives better. Four years ago, Labour handed over a vision for success. We still believe in County Durham, Chair. It's a more challenging environment now and undoubtedly our plans will face opposition, mainly from people over here. But Chair, we see a genuine positive future for our county and all of its communities and I wish the people running the show here at the council shared that optimism. It's time to put County Durham back on track, Chair, shake off the shackles that have held us back for fourteen years and look to the future with optimism and ambition. And that starts by rejecting this budget here and now and creating a new one. Taking in the views from all members, including the ones that have been frozen out from a seat at the top table or having any input to this budget through the cabinet process. I would urge all members to vote against this budget today. Let's take a pause, use the short time we have wisely, Chair, and there is a process that Paul's described that allows us to do that. Let's create a budget to rebuild our county, a budget delivering for all of the people we represent, a budget, Chair, that would put County Durham first.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Alan Shield?
Thank you, Chair. This ongoing budgetary cost pressure, especially for statutory responsibilities for adult services with an ever-aging population and children's services, particularly SEND, looked after children in school transport, being experienced by all local authorities across the whole of the UK, but a more prevalent impact on areas like ourselves with low levels of taxation and significant areas of deprivation. For information, for more than one in four of council leaders and chief executives in England, surveyed by the LGA, think that is likely, that it is likely that their chief finance officer may need to issue a section one-one-four notice this year or next year due to the lack of central government funding to keep services running. We're not alone in having to take difficult decisions in order to set budgets in the most difficult of circumstances. The vast majority of authorities plan to raise their council tax by the maximum rated four point nine nine per cent, with several, for instance Bradford, Birmingham, Leicester City councils and Hampshire and some are said county councils, having been allowed to increase their council tax of up to ten per cent. The cost pressures and demands we face necessitates a prudent but stringent fiscal approach to budget setting utilising corporate and service efficiency savings of eighty million pounds, prudent use of reserves, three point five from the MTF support reserve and increase in the council tax of two point nine nine per cent plus two per cent council tax precept, realising some fourteen point five million pounds in additional income. We have regularly highlighted that we own a few local authorities in the country who continue to provide a very extensive support, up to one hundred per cent relief to all eligible households as a result of our local council tax reduction scheme, covering more than twenty-two per cent of our chargeable properties, costing a total of some sixty-seven million pounds. And that includes fifty-three thousand claimants, thirty-eight per cent of those, twenty thousand being pensioners and sixty-two per cent, thirty-three thousand of claimants from low-income households, many of which are in work and not employed, but in receipt, sorry, are not unemployed, but in receipt of low wages. In addition to this council tax support, the Poverty Action Steering Group have used funding from the Welfare Assistance Reserve to supplement the support available through the Household Support Fund, UK Shared Prosperity Fund and Department of Education funding to progress many initiatives and many projects to further support our communities and residents. And I'll expand on a few of those just to demonstrate how effective we have been. We've increased the number of support hubs for the Bread and Butter Project across County Durham with the acquisition of another refrigerated van. We've implemented the auto-enrollment for free school meal for over two and a half thousand primary and secondary school children. primary and secondary school children, saving households four hundred pounds per school child. That's a total of one million pounds to the economy. And we realised additional pupil premium of around three-and-a-half million pounds. We've increased entitlement of pension credit for over an additional one thousand pensioners with the inclusion of being able to claim winter fuel allowance of two hundred to three hundred pounds, which was removed by this government. We continue with our holiday provision fund for food and household support, predominantly for free school meal children. We have also extended the welcome space and warm hubs through our utilization with Point North for a third further year. And another initiative which was implemented by this administration is the implementation of Financial Inclusion Support Officers, FISOs as they're nicknamed, working in specific secondary, primary and further education establishments, saving a total projected to be over half a million pounds this year. These figures should clearly demonstrate to all members that not only do we provide the necessary support for those financially disadvantaged and households that are classified as vulnerable within our society. As a council, we are committed to accessing and fully utilizing funding from central government as well as accessing our welfare assistance reserves to proactively continue to address the areas of concern. If this doesn't demonstrate that we stand up for all of the people in County Durham, including the outlying villagers, then I don't know what does. It is extremely easy to be critical of proposals or recommendations for this budget and to be frank, we've got some world champions in this respect in this chamber who sometimes make erroneous, misleading and even politically misaligned rhetoric accusations. But when decisions have to be made, my persistent recommendation, and I've repeatedly stated this in many meetings and I'll go on doing it, decisions should always be intelligent-led, evidence-based and proposals need to be fully financially costed, which our officers always comply with, and that members should always read the full reports or attend the necessary briefings. It is with huge disappointment but not surprise that the Labour Group, as the main opposition in this chamber, are again, for the fourth year running, not providing any indication to the residents of County Durham how they would address the budget deficit other than to criticise the budget proposals by the joint administration. Some Labour members actually stated, "It's not our job to set the budget." That may be your considered opinion, but the electorate need to be mindful of that at the next elections, that your contributions to budgets have been limited and negligible. I bet Nigel Farage will make a significant impact on huge potential on all these media outlets in the lead-up to the first of May elections. I remind everyone that the advice from our monitoring officer, failure to set a lawful budget in due time may be considered as misfairness in public office, negligent or breach of our statutory duty. Alternatively, your intention could be construed by this persistent negativity as nothing more than deliberate delay in passing a lawful budget, which either promotes central government intervention with extremely serious consequences, probably impacting on our council tax benefit support scheme and members' neighbourhood budgets, or it enhances public perception that this is nothing more than political posturing by the Labour Group, confirming that it is something that they are very competent at than actually running a council. No one in this council wants to put up council tax anywhere near the maximum amount of four point nine eight per cent. And just for explanation's sake, a reduction of one per cent on council tax equates to a saving of approximately twenty-five pence per week, thirteen pounds for the full year for anyone living in a bandier property, or thirty-seven pence per week, nineteen pounds for the full year for anyone living in a bandier property. And this has been mentioned, to further use our depleted reserves to reduce the council tax burden by one per cent would reduce the reserve balance by two point nine per cent. These alternatives are unnecessary to even consider at this moment and if central government had honoured their promise to redeem the additional national insurance costs to local authorities, then the need to use any reserves would not have been necessary and potentially consider a reduction in the council tax levy for this year. I've provided my supporters' budget to all members, acknowledging that it's taken account all the relevant comments from the overview and scrutiny management board, including the acceptance of a proposal submitted by the only proposal submitted by a scrutiny committee, and that was the Envireng Committee. I heard councillor Marshall talking about an alternative universe and I sometimes wonder what universe we're all living in here. The simple fact is inflation today has peaked at three per cent. It's likely to increase even further, perhaps even as high as three point seven per cent. And employment is likely to rise also, and that's attributable to the rise in employers' national insurance contribution.
One minute, councillor.
From thirteen point two to fifteen per cent and the lowering of the threshold, which has imposed a twenty-five billion pound millstone around the neck of businesses, which has impacted on the economy, which was previously the highest performer in the UK. Much has been said about Liz Truss and Cassie Cartang crashing the economy. I'm mindful that Rachel Reeves is in danger of following that disaster. And finally, I was contacted by one of my fellow colleagues following a meeting that he had and a brief conversation he had with councillor Marshall. And he asked councillor Marshall why he didn't attend the cabinet meeting instead of making political statements. And the response was, "If I can cause maximum embarrassment at any other meetings, why should I bother?"
Time, councillor.
That, Chair, is a statement which will reflect badly on councillors with the public. My final comment, Chair, is just to say I want to also place on record my sincere thanks to the Corporate Director of Resources, for whom I have the most highest regard. Paul Darby and his team have been absolutely superb in supporting and continuing due diligence application to help deliver these budget proposals, which I firmly recommend. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Kevin Neely.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sure Alan will forgive me for not being one of the usual suspects because I think that's the first time I've ever pressed the green button because I didn't know how to do it. And Alan will also know that the thing I'm going to raise, I raised with him quietly in an email last November, about one of the implications of how we're dealing with budgets in this authority is we don't look at things in the whole and the impact that issues can have. And one of the very small things that will happen out here is a small saving on the Empire Theatre in concert. Now, I'm not going to twist on about, you know, you don't do this to the gala or whatever, although I did, so I shouldn't. But the implications for closing the Empire Theatre an extra night a week is you put another shutter day down in concert. You're already going to close the access point in concert, which is opposite the Empire Theatre, so that'll be another five days a week shutter down in concert. And we're not looking at our problems in the round. The Empire Theatre, apart from the appalling impact on the staff who will lose hours, have to do split shifts, make their life difficult, you've got lovely committed staff in there who really want to try and do things, is that... And I did point this out, John, i-if you reduce the number of nights you work, you can't get films. So that means you're going to reduce your chances of making money. And that means next year's budget, you're going to be looking at this and saying, "Well, this is costing a fortune." And it'll be at risk because that's how these things always end up rolling. If we can't show films in a cinema, you really are a bit buggered, frankly. And we need to look at every chance you have to work with other people, do things differently and do some joined-up thinking. We questioned the looked-after child children budget, you know, which, I've got to say, has crept up on me as a bit of a horror story. I wasn't aware until very recently that we've got a firm in our neck of the woods charging five thousand pounds a week per child. And I was told when I raised this with the finance director that they're the lucky ones. There are so...
One minute, councillor.
... where we're paying a million pounds a year. That means six to one, six to one ratio of staff to children. That's not care in the community, that's containment in the community. We need to look at the third sector, the Housing Association world and say, "Can we come up with different models of provision here that meet needs?" And we challenge some decisions perhaps about what is actually happening because you can't afford to keep doing this. It will not work. You need to be creative, you need to think, we need to bring people in and see how we do things. Thank you, Chair.
Councilors, I'm going to suggest that we have a ten-minute break. Are we all agreed? Thank you.
I will say it's going to be a little while, so make yourselves comfortable. The next councillor is councillor Charlton Lenny.
Hiya, thank you.
Councillors, thank you.
I've been looking through the paperwork and some of the feedback from the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board on the 13th of February this year, questioned whether the leisure transformation programme, especially the commitment for the new build facility at Seum would be viable or deliverable. Six days later, on the 19th of February, the medium term financial plan is littered with cabinet comments saying that they remain committed to Seum. But then right at the very bottom, in the conclusion, it says that the Seum leisure transformation is not affordable and not financially prudent, which is another U-turn on Seum. For four years, we've been fighting for the leisure transformation programme at Seum Leisure Centre in Deanside Division. We've repeatedly asked to at least revamp the mugga, which is totally not usable with our neighbourhood budget, but every time we've been met with red tape and broken promises. We are pleased to say that we've managed to keep £60,000 from our budget committed to the project through the ATP, and we do hope that this comes through. However, us funding something through our neighbourhood budgets that should have been done four years ago, and has now been said it's not going to happen, it's not good enough. And it's just another plaster on poor financial planning. And there's so many leisure centres that have been done, and Seum's missed out again, and it doesn't sound like we're going to get anything in the future. So I just want to say that, you know, we'll keep fighting and we'll try and do as best we can, but it should be everybody doing their best, not just me and John. And finally, just on something that councillor Shield said, I work in a secondary school and the FISA team that come into that school, and they're coming to schools across County Durham. I know there's only a couple of them, but every single school should have a FISA team member working with them, they're brilliant, worth a wait in gold. I would have one in every single secondary and every single primary because they've really helped out. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Eddie Adams.
Thank you Chair, councillor Eddie Adams representing Aycliffe West Division. I would just like to remind members here today that during last February's debate on the same subject, councillor Hopgood made a range of bold statements on the council's finances. And if I may Chair, quote from the 2024 minutes, says, despite the challenging financial position alongside continued price inflation and heightened cost of borrowing risk, the budget nevertheless included an ambitious capital programme of new and additional investments. Councillor Hopgood further expanded this as, and I said, a huge investment at times of significant budget challenges, but a programme which was fully funded. Yet Madam Chair, we are told today that another ambitious capital programme in 2025/26 requires funding through very expensive borrowing, and the debt paid for by the revenue account at the same time as increasing council tax. Councillor Hopgood went on to say for 2025/26 onwards, it cast an ominous shadow over medium term financial planning, and there were some significant challenges to come beyond this. Yet she and her cabinet seem to be ignoring these significant challenges, and have presented to council this morning additional burden of debt on council taxpayers, even after receiving a £48 million of significant additional government funding.
One minute councillor.
Deputy councillor Bell, in seconding last year's recommendations, warned us that every £20 million of capital borrowing roughly costs a million pound a year to service the debt, and that the joint administration could not afford to do everything it would like. He also said reserves should only be used to develop plans to make savings, to live within the council means. In my mind Chair, this could lead the council into difficult territory in future years. Clearly, the cabinet under this leadership has struggled to live within its means, and is stretching the taxpayers' burden to unacceptable limits, beyond a reasonable risk that is prudent for future generations. It is time for change Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Bill Moist.
Thank you Chair. Bill Moist representing Chestily Street. I'd like to thank councillor Shield, and I agree with you Alan, there is a lot of good work done in this authority, a lot of good work that needs our support and admiration. I don't think this budget is one of them. Another comment from Alan Shield said, all decisions are intelligence based decisions. Well, I just want to pick one parochial point up before I go on to me other points is, where was the intelligence in choosing Woodhouse Close for a leisure centre? Over Chestily Street, that was ready to go, and I appreciate Seum is in the same position. That wasn't intelligence based, that was politically based, I'm sorry to say. And you also mentioned that the inflation has gone to 3% today, absolutely, it looks like there's economic heavy weather coming. And yet this budget is proposing another £4 million in costs to cover the borrowing for the Milburn Gate. Surely this is the time not to be playing Monopoly, it's a time for prudent accounting. Why risk more borrowing? And just briefly counting on capital projects, the leisure transformation scheme, even the refurbs, were delivered £9 million over their expected costs, not the budget, over the expected costs. This council has a problem with delivering capital projects. But moving on, this is my fourth budget, and I think I was starting to get to where things are going. I understand it. I came here in 2021, and I came here on the back of a vanity project that the residents of County Durham were against, and I was against it. Here I am, four years later, and it looks like there's another vanity project that the residents are against, on the opposite side of the river. It's, you know, this cabinet accused everyone of not giving alternatives, but I had a brief talk with my colleague councillor Bell, another independent.
One minute councillor.
We've put alternatives to this cabinet and cabinet members just to be ignored. And I understand the 4.9%, and I understand why it has to be given, but this budget is not intelligence based. It's Durham centric again, and I just can't agree with it. I believe we should have a delay and not agree this budget, to give people the time to get together, to put reasonable alternatives from the various towns and villages, and get down in a room, sit down and get a County Durham budget, a proper budget for County Durham. I'm afraid I just can't support this. I want the independents to be independent and deliver for their residents. That's what we're here for, deliver for the residents, not for a nice view of the cathedral for people who live in County Durham. I'm sorry, but I can't support this budget. Thank you.
Councillor Joan Howie.
Thank you Chair, councillor Joan Howie Wood, House Close. I wasn't going to, I wouldn't do that, I wasn't going to speak today, but some things I've heard have made me want to. So I came into this with a leaflet saying that I wouldn't go in over an inflation rise. However, this has had to happen, like the PM, the now Prime Minister promised that there would be no rise in council tax, but what's he done? He's U-turned on everything he's said, and now we have to do this, it's expected that this is put forward from us, this amount. You know, we have to go with it. So Covid has caused a massive strain on the council still that we're still paying for, we've paid out a lot, and ever since Covid, we've had more children that have needed to use it, more people in social care that have needed more money, and wages have gone up. We've seen that inflation has got, not inflation, has gone up again today to 3%. Things are going up and up and up all the time. Sorry, I'm just a bit, I've got notes all over at the moment. And it's causing a massive strain on all services at the moment with wage rises, national insurance going up and everything like that. It's got to be covered, it has to be covered. Milburn Gate, I know it's upsetting everybody, but we've got to remember it was the previous administration that brought that forward when it was lacking, and we've got pictures all over of councillor Marshall with his coat on, with his, you know, vest on, showing a company that was about to go bust, it wasn't a viable company anyway, and he was still stood there in his pictures showing that, and we have now got to pick up how bad Milburn Gate actually is. We've got councillors over there that are more than happy to put a mini stack from their 106 money into next to a football club to keep that football club going that they used to, where they could have put it further into the community and help with more playgrounds in the area that we needed budgets for, just across the road from you guys. But we've got a mini stack because it's going in the town, they've got to have one there as well. Businesses now, little businesses, I've had people come to me saying how they're going to suffer and how they're going to lay people off because of what's going. So we're going to have more people that are going to need services from the council because we're going to have people out of business, and we're going to have people out of jobs, so they're going to need to use the council tax that we've still got 0% on to help people. So we've got to look at this. And last time I looked, the PCD, who refuses to talk to councillors who are not Labour, will not talk to us about the bike situation, she doesn't want to know unless it's a Labour councillor. So there we go, that is my bit on it, and I will be voting for this, and I am now an independent and looked at it properly, but I still will be voting for this.
Councillor Alwyn Gunn.
Thank you Chair. Now we are coming to the end of this coalition's term of office. I think this final budget here exposes the complete folly of the coalition's term of office, and what we're seeing now are the damaged fruits of all of their major decisions Chair, taken over the last four years. My colleagues have already listed some of them, but I want to speak about a couple of them. And firstly, the complete lack of investment in small towns and villages like Willington, which is in my division. I mean, we didn't even get included in the improvements to the A690, badly needed, we didn't even get that. But the other one I want to talk about is the cuts to early help and the youth justice service. Two crucial services, providing crucial care and help for our families, for our carers, for our children and young people. Cutting just short of three quarters of a million pounds in this budget, and nearly two and a half million pounds forecast, and such cuts Chair, store up problems for the future for this council. And more importantly, they store up problems for the children and families affected. And we've already heard about the pressures upon the children looked after budget. But we all see, every one of us in this chamber actually sees families going to food banks, children going to school hungry, not being able to concentrate, not being able to learn, and schools and voluntary groups actually stepping up to support, to support those children and families. And this coalition steps down and cuts. It's a bad example, and I think this coalition must be made to own the fact that they are cutting help from vulnerable families, to parents and children at the same time as building a showroom and a high end caf, dressed up as bringing back the DLI museum, when the proud and glorious exhibition is in a building worthy of it, the story planned by Labour administration. This coalition has already spent millions on that building, and a further one third of a million pounds on running costs is in this budget. That is this council's, this coalition's priority. It's not our small towns and villages, it's not our families, it's not our children, it's a high end caf in Durham city. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lucy Hovells.
Thank you Chair, Lucy Hovells representing the Trimpton Wiggly Hill Division. Yes Chairman, this morning I'm really concerned about the budget. It's cost the most vulnerable people, as my colleagues just outlined, in terms of our frontline services. Councils are about delivering frontline services, that's what we do. We don't make widgets and we don't build empires. We actually put things in place to support our residents. And I'm very proud of that. It says also that within the report, there's £2.3 million in '25, and then it goes on to £3.4 million over the next four years. And that's quite a lot. Our communities, and I speak on behalf of the small rural isolated communities, many of which is within our division, they suffer daily. We've had the motorbike problem, and yes, it is a police problem, but we are partner. We are partnered at that table, so we have to play our part. And it does cost money, but they're the things that matter to the people that we serve. ASB happens on a daily basis. I had three incidents yesterday, and I'm not gonna bore you with them because they were serious incidents. And again, affects the whole community. The blight, the empty buildings that we've spoke about, again, in our rural villages. Our villages run down, decrying for investment, decrying for regeneration. And this budget doesn't address that. We have no fancy bus station, we have no flagship projects, and we don't have a leisure centre, and no CCTV. I believe if we'd had something in this budget which would help with all communities with the CCTV, it would really make a difference. It would take that fear of the crime and antisocial behaviour away, and it would be that investment that our communities are crying for. No investment in the children's death hall, we don't have infrastructure, that's what I've been told, should be able to provide the CCTV that desperately needed. Just, if you just bear with me, Chair. It says in the plan about the Crime and Disorder Bill, and it features as in there, part of the proposal within the council plan, which takes in my issues around the CCTV, antisocial behaviour. But it doesn't really mention the Millgate development within that plan. And the plan is aligned, the financial plan and the council plan are aligned. And I really don't get that connection, unless I'm missing something. I read the papers again last night, and I just didn't pick that up. So I do have some concerns and some worries about it, Chair. Thank you.
You, councillor. Councillor Rob York.
Thanks, Chair. Rob York, West Auckland Electoral Division. Chair, today's budget debate is one of the most important debates ever held in this chamber. If this budget is approved today, it sets a standard of borrowing never before known. It takes borrowing at this council to over £1 billion. And that's why a name vote today is so important. Despite having the best government settlement for 14 years, this council continues to borrow, borrow, borrow while spending what little reserves it has left. It's burning the candle at both ends. Now, anyone can borrow, but it's important that residents understand which county councillors voted to saddle them with so much debt. With £55 million per annum in repayments alone, that works out for every woman, man and child in County Durham at £105,000 a year. Now, the councillor's opposite will all say it's fiscally prudent, it's possible, it's benchmarked against other councils, it's only 9% of our annual budget. Well, I wouldn't run my business like that, and I don't think you'd run your business like that. So why should this council run itself like that? County Durham to this coalition cabinet is just one big game of Monopoly. As you know in Monopoly, everybody likes to buy up the expensive properties like Mayfair. Well, let's imagine that's Durham City. Nobody wants to land on Old Kent Road or Whitechapel Road. And that's why this council has left our towns and villages behind. If there's a strategic reason for buying up properties, great. However, what's happening with the Newgate Centre, another building in Bishop Auckland which it owns and paid millions for? It can't even do anything with the old mother care store which fell down years ago. Another white elephant. What's in this budget for the residents of Shildon, Counton, Leom, Newton, Nickliffe, Spennymoor, West Auckland, St Ellen, Zedley Dean, Toffdale? Yes, Toffdale, which was promised half a bypass four years ago, still hasn't been delivered. Now, there's a lot in this report, an awful lot in this report. And I'm asking you to focus on one thing.
One Minute Councillor.
When you knock on doors, remember, this MTFP, you'll be borrowing £1 billion with £55 million a year in repayments. Not for one year, not for two years, for every decade for the next three or four. Remember that when you're knocking on doors, and that's why I oppose today's budget.
Councillor Sutton Lloyd.
Councillor Sutton Lloyd, Aycliff North and Midridge. I took the trouble to attend the cabinet meeting last week with several of my joint administration colleagues when the Milburn Gate item was discussed in great detail. I asked a detailed question on the actual ins and outs of the deal that we're making now and compared it with the deal that was signed up in 2018. I am comfortable that this new deal is significantly better than the old one. And it's opened to all of our members to get Part B papers and the cabinet questions. And if any of the Labour members had bothered to be there, they would know the truth. And I remind them what was being said by the Chief Finance Officer, that we as elected members ought to our residents to make sure that we take due diligence and we get the facts and figures before we make decisions. Thank you.
Councillor Joel Quinn.
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually surprised that we have to have a vote to raise council tax. I seem to remember a promise from the current government that during the general election, and I quote, "A freeze of council tax." That's right, you won't pay a penny more. Chair, no one wants to raise council tax. And had there been an alternative budget proposed with a lesser raise or even no raise, I can honestly stand here and say I would have supported it. However, Chair, we all know today's about one thing, and that is political point scoring. Vote against a budget, yet have no alternative. Typical, if you ask me. We all know whoever is in power at the current time has to set a budget. Chair, I don't see any other option other than to support the only budget put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Phil Heavyside.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'll be brief. First of all, could I thank Paul Darby and his team for the work they've done on introducing this balance budget? I'm confident that had I or any other one member of this council had a question about us, it would have been duly considered and answered. The Milburn Gate development has had quite a bit of focus both today and at Court Scrutiny Board last week. I'm disappointed to hear that so many members are continuing to criticise the plan to unlock what is a disastrous situation you'll be left with. When last week, nobody at scrutiny had even accessed the Part B papers. Criticism of a plan you haven't even taken the trouble to read, surely not. Once again, I recommend anyone with doubts, they should read the Part B papers. At scrutiny board last week, I proposed the independent inquiry into the development right back to its inception. And the board unanimously agreed that this was the best course of action. I actually helped out councillor Marshall because he spoke before me and overlooked proposing it. So I helped a lot and made sure they got that sorted. We definitely need to find out the mistakes right back to the inception of the project so we don't have to do them again and cut so costly. We don't want Durham County Council having to take on another development project that's been stalled for years with no prospect of being resolved due to the failure of the main contractor and the contract sent them to in 2017 and 18. In the absence of any other workable balanced budget, I will be supporting this budget as tables and would encourage others to do likewise.
Councillor. Councillor Angela Sterling.
Thank you, Chair. Angela Sterling from Delphes Ward Division. So as a small business owner, I'd like to raise the issue of increases in employers' national insurance contributions. This tax has hit lots of local small businesses very hard because apparently we're not working people. That was news to me, I didn't realise I sat around on my bum with my feet up all day, but there you go. Suppliers have had no choice but to increase costs on the back of this increase, which will also increase costs to the council. Additionally, I note that the cost for our directly employed workforce is £8.2 million. The government reimbursement falls short of some £3.8 million. And we will incur these costs. This is hardly the full reimbursement that was promised by the Chancellor at the time of the Autumn Budget Statement. If the government had given us full reimbursement, we would not be needing to use reserves this year. And that's another pledge broken by this government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor James Rollinson.
Thank you, Chair. In Labour's last budget of February 2021, they had in their capital spend and borrowing for the new build at Bishop Auckland, which was in the worst condition and the water was about to run through the door. And the improvements to Abbey, Louisa, Spennymoor and Teasdale leisure centres. In that budget, there was no mention of borrowing for new builds at Chesterley Street and Seum. When we agreed the Leisure Transformation in October 2021, the estimate for both Chesterley Street and Seum was in the region of £50 million. It has now risen to £70 million. As none of this borrowing is self-financing, it is unaffordable at this time with a revenue cost of £4 million per year. I and my colleagues in the cabinet remain committed to the new builds. But at this time, when the finances for the council are much clearer. We've heard a lot today about Milburn Gate. I think a lot has been said in the press as well. But I understand that only a few members have signed for the Part B papers and none of the opposition have signed for them. Having an opinion on this can only be taken seriously if you have all the information in front of you. The development would have cost the council £200 million for the head lease over 35 years, a millstone around the neck of this council, negotiated under Labour. Last week, under Look North, we saw Alan Cook, the developer, the developer, not the council. He was asked when he thought the Milburn Gate project would be finished. His answer, he didn't know. And you may have noticed he was sat in plush surroundings, what is to be the Everyman Cinema, kitted out by ourselves as part of them taking the lease.
One Minute Councillor.
Thank you. We also had councillor Marshall looking like Grisly Adams in the interview. I'm pleased to see he's been to the barbers, especially for today. But I'm disappointed he is minus his tall and high vis.
Chair, point of order. At the start of every meeting, you ask for courtesy in the chamber, and I don't think that was particularly courteous.
I was just saying how smart councillor Marshall looked. Can I continue, Chair?
Councillors. Are we finished?
In that interview, he said that he knew nothing about the Milburn Gate development. But having been briefed at every step, and he also said that council should come clean with an independent inquiry. I would welcome that and look at it from how it started. Chair, Labour are here again at a budget meeting with no ideas, no amendments and no vision for the people of County Durham. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Angela Sirtes.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Angela Sirtes is representing the Easerton Division. Four years ago, this coalition council were given a gift back, they were given a hamper full of gifts. And all of those gifts were there to be delivered. But unfortunately, I've hardly seen any of that across our uplying villages and communities because what I have seen is more vanity projects and more city-centric projects delivered than anything else. There's hardly been any investment. And there's also been purposeful delays on local schemes as well. I've been spoken to verbally by people who've actually admitted that one of my schemes, or one of our schemes, David sat at the back there, was purposely put on hold while another scheme was delivered. But that's not what I'm here for now. Actually, I used to feel quite comfortable that councillor Shield was leading the poverty agenda. But his comments today have really shattered that illusion. I think it's absolutely shameful that councillor Shields has used the Poverty Action Steering Group and all of the work that was left as a gift to him as an excuse to deliver this budget. The bread and butter thing wasn't produced to this county by me when I was in the cabinet. And I really appreciate that you've picked that up and carried it forward. But that is a dreadful thing to use to get this budget through. FIZOS were on the table as part of the Poverty Action Agenda, left by me in the Poverty Action Plan. And I've got a copy of it which still belongs to me. They were in the plan, they just weren't costed up. And I appreciate that you've delivered to councillor Shields, but not to deliver this budget. The other thing that you were talking about, you were talking about the pension credits. Six years ago, we employed Durham County Council Welfare Rights Campaign Team.
One Minute Councillor.
Welfare Rights Campaign Team, when the previous government took television licences off people, what did we do? We put a campaign team in place and we got a campaign team that went out and spoke to older people. And we realised their benefits and we returned over £500,000 worth of benefits. But not to get a budget through. That is absolutely shameful. I'm sorry councillor Shield, I just, that's how I feel. Four years ago, you promised us a food strategy. Where is that at? You're claiming that we went through this, you know, like, let's just put people onto free school meals. We had a national food strategy that you rejected. Everything has been put in place. And I'm sorry, this budget does nothing for the people. It does nothing for our uplying villages and towns. In fact, where is our people first, people focused council gone? Because quite frankly, I can't approve this budget.
Time councillor.
Thank you, Chair. When somebody has the audacity to stand up and use the poverty action strategies that we all put in place to support people. Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair, point of order. Just to clarify, the accusation by your leader was that we were not doing anything. I haven't undermined what you were previously doing. I have extended the role of the Poverty Action Steering Group and the Child Poverty Working Group to deliver these. Thank you.
Councillors. Councillor Shield, that was a point of personal explanation. Councillors, we've been here a long time. Can we just remember that we are in this chamber to do a job? And if someone cannot be respectful to someone else, there is a door there. We need to be respectful and we need to show the public that we are respectful. We will continue with councillor Chris Lanes.
Thank you, Chair. Chris Lanes, Sedgfield Division and Vice Chair of Scrutiny. The MTFP has been considered by Scrutiny Management Board on four occasions before it came to council today. Councillor Crute has already summarised the comments made by members during those sessions. But I'd like to reflect on them a little more. The discussions in scrutiny have been thorough, robust and wide-ranging. Inevitably, there have been differences of opinion, of course, on aspects of the MTFP. But there has also been much consensus and a shared appreciation of the many challenges and financial pressures that this local authority continues to face. While we may have alternative views about how to resolve problems, colleagues agreed that the funding of local government is not sufficient and that the current system doesn't work. With that in mind, we collectively looked forward to the long-awaited Fair Funding Review while acknowledging that there are no guarantees that the outcome will favour Durham County Council. It's important to note that on each occasion that the Head of Corporate Finance has presented the MTFP to scrutiny, he has very carefully and plainly laid out the facts. He has backed up the figures with the data and insights that have informed the recommendations that we are considering today. He has shared the feedback from rounds of consultation that have accompanied the process. And he has made it crystal clear what the implications are of accepting today's. what the implications are of accepting today's recommendations and of not doing so. As it did last year, this budget achieves a delicate and increasingly difficult-to-sustain balance. It protects frontline services and provides essential support for those who need it most. It does this while continuing to invest in our county, to both maintain and improve the physical infrastructure that already exists and to support business, culture and transport, address the climate emergency, and back the projects that are essential for the long-term prosperity of County Durham and its residents. As I stated, scrutiny has examined the MTFP in detail four times. The latest comments from board members that are included with this report and which councillor Crute summarised-
One minute, councillor.
Highlight some very big issues. There's no doubt about that. However, it is very instructive that in terms of the actual budget itself, scrutiny board, which has a majority of members from opposition groups, has not asked for any changes. In fact, the only formal substantive request that a scrutiny committee has made through this whole process is that funding for countryside ranges be retained, and that has been acted upon. We continue to operate in a financial context that is very difficult for local authorities. Not everything in this budget is palatable, but it is fair and it succeeds in finding a balance. I will support it, and I urge colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor John Schulworth?
Thanks, Chair. Everyone had high expectations of the new Labour government after 14 years of austerity. The promise was of great things. In eight months, the Labour government shot themselves in the foot, the leg and the head. There's nothing less to shoot. The £73 million transport infrastructure money is given to Durham County Council by the previous government was chopped by £23 million. That's £50 million taken from residents in this county. The National Insurance Increase to Employers wasn't going to affect the ordinary working man, woman or child. It most certainly does. We short of £3.8 million through that. And that was supposed to be reimbursed in total to all local authorities, and all local authorities up and down the country, police and fire, are all affected by this, and it will affect everybody when they go to the shop, when they buy anything or do anything, go on holiday or whatever. Turn to this administration's positive investment. We've addressed and completed the works on Burnegill Bank to the tune of £5 million, where there was a land slippage. Also, £15 million of funds allocated to address the land slippage on the main road into Durham City, the A6890. We put £8.8 million into the unclassified road network across the county and a further £5 million in design costs over a two-year period for feasibility studies to address the work programme and priority structures. And just to touch on what councillor Marshall, the leader of the Labour group, said about potholes, he knows as well as anybody else. You can put it on the members' portal, you can email it, you can tell Member Services. We have 16 highways inspectors across the county who will go and address those concerns, and if it's done, it'll be done within 48 hours. The Labour Party never put enough funding into the highway network, ever, and everybody needs roads, no matter where you go. Don't forget, it's the new Labour government that has more or less mandated and compelled all local authorities up and down the country to increase council tax, or you're going to get no more money. And we're all here to see that residents of County Durham receive the best, and that's what we're all here to deliver as council members. And can I just remind everybody in this room, in 1999, and I was here then, the Labour group put the council tax at 15.9%. So you needn't come lecturing me, mind.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Alison Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't quite ready for that one there. Thank you to Paul and the team for a very comprehensive set of papers, as per usual, first of all. The many aspects of the budget that are questioned, but most of all, it is the impact on our towns and villages at the expense of money being invested in the city of Durham. For example, three projects alone total in £100 million, the bus station, the former DLI building, and now Milburn Gate development. In relation to Milburn Gate, the Chair of Management Board, our leader, and several other people have highlighted the inclusion of this at this point in time within the budget papers. It relies on capital receipts being used to fund Chesley Street and Seum leisure centres. I believe this is aspirational, but I'm actually pleased to see at long last it's recognised as needed in both of those locations. I've long campaigned, along with others, for the developments to go ahead, yet it is political decisions that have been made ignoring this. Yet others have gone ahead. Scrutiny meetings will confirm this. On each occasion where possible, councillor Shaw and I have raised our local leisure centres. How can we say there is an intention to fund, bearing in mind it is dependent on full occupancy, and that is only after full completion of the build has taken place, which we are told will take 18 months to two years to rectify? So exactly when do we expect these two projects to go ahead? I feel it is disingenuous to at the 11th hour to include these, almost feeling like a sweetener to get a budget through. Our communities outside Durham City deserve better. The residents of County Durham deserve better, but most of all, my Chesley Street residents deserve better, who had costs, plans and public consultation in place for their leisure centre. Why should our towns and villages be disadvantaged?
One minute, councillor.
And for this reason, and many others, I cannot support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jake Miller?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Jake Miller, Chimden and Thornley. First of all, you keep saying nobody on this side signed for Part B. I think you need to go and check that before anybody else says that, because you've proven yourselves to be wrong. Chair, I can't vote for this budget today. There's nothing in it for the villagers that I represent. And how can I go back and ask residents and explain that I voted for something that has no benefit to them whatsoever? Yet again, we have another year of money being poured into the city and nothing for our villagers. And yet you're asking residents in villages to pay higher council tax. And as for potholes, there's a pothole in Wheatdale that's been there 10 years. Maurice Nichols reported it, Jude reported it, and I've reported it, and it's still there, let alone 48 hours. This budget does nothing but hit our most vulnerable residents. For example, the report mentions a charge for learned disability transport, cuts to adult protection, and the depletion of the substance misuse team. 2.3 million cuts to our frontline services, services that protect and safeguard vulnerable people. And what impact does all that have on our residents? And it's not just this budget that worries me. In scrutiny management board last week, we heard in future that we could potentially be looking at AAP budgets, or whatever they're going to be called, Members' budgets, and the local council tax reduction scheme. And I know that times are hard for councils, this one included, but that's no excuse to go after our most vulnerable. Our villagers, like mine, rely on the generosity of the AAP. Community groups need Members' budgets to deliver the services that this cabinet is proposing to cut further. We can't keep cutting back discretionary services and expect the third sector to pick up the tab. The third sector have been faced with austerity for the past 14 years as well. And what impact do we expect these cuts to have in our villages? What financial impact does it have on other budgets, whether that be internally at the council or externally to our partners? Because that need doesn't just go away because you cut-
One minute, councillor.
And then we get to transport. Last year, I stood here and said buses are being cut back left, right and centre, and the Cabinet's response was to resurface roads. There's no change whatsoever in this budget. How many of you actually have emails or phone calls to say the bus services in County Durham are good? Because I bet nobody does. But I'll go back to the people at Chimbden and Thornley, and I'll tell them that whilst they stand there for hours on end at a bus stop, they'll have a lovely, smooth road to have a look at. But they probably won't even have that, because the money to resurface those roads won't come into the villagers, they'll be in the city. And in terms of less money from the government, that was mentioned before, it's my understanding that the leader of the council stated in correspondence in October 22 that Durham accepts that CRSTS money is ring-fenced. So then this cabinet accepted we were going to get less money. So we should be using transport money from our new mayor-
Time, councillor.
-to connect our rural villagers to the city and our towns. And that's why I'm not supporting this budget, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mark Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Miller, if you've got a pothole in your area that's been there for 10 years that hasn't been fixed, I'd urge your residents to get better councillors. Councillor Chetton Lane, this council has delivered millions of pounds of new and renewed play and recreation facilities in the last few years. I'd be delighted to discuss your mugger issue, because neither myself nor councillor Rowlandson have ever been contacted by you about it. And in the last four years, I'm aware that Seum councillors have had around a half a million pounds of neighbourhood budget, and hundreds of thousands of pounds has also been available from Section 106 and AAP budgets. Councillor Marshall, let's turn to the budget. You didn't attend the scrutiny meetings in December and January, which discussed the budget, nor sent a substitute. Somewhat disappointing. When you did finally attend a budget scrutiny meeting a week or so ago, you made some similar comments as to what you've made this morning. I'd like to clarify a few things from these two occasions. On pest control, we've actually cut the cost in half for low-income residents, and over 1,300 families have benefited. This budget also continues the investment in our default team, which has now cleared over 2,000 filthy yards and gardens since we introduced it. When Labour were in power, they were pretty much just left to rot. Councillor Marshall, you mentioned the bus station, a scheme which you were part of the cabinet responsible for signing off on, which we've had to fix. You also mentioned Milburn Gate, but haven't even read the cabinet report. But you also signed off on the original deal. It's interesting how many things you've signed off on that we've had issues with. Perhaps if you'd attended cabinet when this was discussed, or any cabinet meeting in the last three years, you'd know what's going on. Perhaps if you'd attended a single business Durham Advisory Board in the last three years, or even sent your substitute, we might listen to your nonsense about this council and county. As you don't attend any of these meetings, I can assure your colleagues that this council is leading the way in bringing jobs and investment to our county, with 8,000 more jobs and tourism up by billions.
One minute, councillor.
I suppose it's hardly surprising you've got nothing to suggest in the budget, given you don't know what's going on. You've said you aren't going to vote for the budget, but you've not offered a single alternative. Do opposition members want to be accused by their residents of playing petty politics and refusing to support a budget that not one of them has put forward a single alternative to, month after month of opportunities to feed into the process? So, to those who aren't under the Labour whip, could I suggest it might not be in you or your residents' interests to side with the Labour group, especially given that they aren't suggesting a single alternative to this budget? Thank you, Chair.
Chair, can I raise a point of clarification? One of those councillors is sadly no longer with us, so I would ask you to have a bit more respect. And the second thing is, I wasn't criticising councillors. That pothole's been reported, and it doesn't fall within the policy to be filled. That's what I was getting at.
Thank you, councillor.
Point of personal explanation then, Chair. If it's not in the policy to be filled, why mention it?
Councillors, let me remind you. I'm going to have it printed and put up there. It's a long morning, and we've still got a way to go. Let's try to stay calm and get our point across, and remember that we are discussing the budget. Thank you.
Chair, I didn't want to interrupt you. Could I just say, in terms of, like, it's fair enough if people want to keep mentioning my name. I know I live rent-free in the Coalition's heads, and I've done for the past four years. But Chair, could I just say, I spoke for 10 minutes, and I spoke and I disagreed with the policy and with the budget, and not the people and the individuals who've made that policy, Chair? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Julie Skirfield?
Julie Skirfield, councillor for Chesley Street East. I want to agree with my colleague, councillor Goan, in raising significant concerns about staff reductions in early help, which in the report says states may lead to increased waiting lists for families and children and young people, and could lead to some families going more quickly to statutory social care referrals. I believe on both of those issues, I would substitute the words inevitably will with the words used may and could. In County Durham, we have known for many years, the sooner families receive the help they need, the better the outcomes will be for those children. In the vast majority of cases, the proposed reduction in early help comes on top of years and years of savage cuts brought about by austerity, which will only lead to increased demand at the short end downstream. This is evidenced by the year-on-year increase in the numbers of children being removed from their families, with a 225% increase in the looked-after placement budget. The £3 million Child Prevention Grant states, the criteria states, the funding should be used across the full breadth of preventative services, including early help. I'm disappointed, therefore, that we are being asked to approve a staff reduction in early help, as opposed to an increase through effective transformational use of this important fund to improve the early help offer, which genuinely brings services upstream to where children and families in all of our communities need them. This is what will positively serve children and families who are experiencing stress and challenges, and will improve outcomes for them by getting the help they need earlier and keeping families together. In relation to the hike in the council tax, this sitting alongside the £55 million investment in yet another Durham city centre initiative-
One minute, councillor.
I want to question the self-financing assertion, given the risky economic world we live in currently. This investment will be cold comfort to residents in Chesley Street who are seeing no investment in their town, scrapping the free after 2pm park, and has had an inverse impact or adverse impact on already struggling town centre. Serious road safety concerns on the A167 in our town, with cars regularly driving fast through red traffic lights where children cross to go to school, have been met with an acknowledged raft of required improvements, but no money to fund them. Our promised new leisure centre, not happening, no money. And I seriously do not think many of my residents, or any of my residents, will buy the line that this Milburn Gate development will be back, this development will be back on the table, big if, a big, huge, massive if, significant profits come from the Milburn Gate debt. For those reasons, I won't be supporting this budget.
Thank you. Councillor Alex Watson?
Thank you, Chair. Can we seriously be praising the current government? I talk about the winter funeral allowance in particular. Are we happy about that? The National Insurance contribution, the shortfall in our grant that's going to cost us £3.8 million. Are we praising central government for that again? We're being clobbered, clobbered and clobbered. For information, I'm Alex Watson, I chair the Order Committee for the council. We might make the decisions, Chair, but really, it's critical we do have good financial management, which we have. I am constantly made aware of the difficulties in finding savings in extremely difficult times in order to set a budget that goes somewhere to maintaining crucial services. The previous Conservative government showed no mercy in imposing serious financial restraints on local government. It was felt that the current Labour government would be a lot more sympathetic. But unfortunately, this is not the case. The financial position of this authority is dire. But despite this terrible situation, we find ourselves, through our financial team, brilliantly led by Paul Derby, has been able to come up with a budget that will again maintain our essential services, although there is still pain that we all have to bear in other services. Chair, despite all this, money has been found to invest in all areas across County Durham, although we will argue that it is not enough, and that other areas get a bigger share. I know that Concert had over £900,000 invested in the Empire Theatre-
One minute, councillor.
-which is Concert's jewel in the crown. Middle Street was repaved at a cost of a million pound. Let's not forget that every couns- Let's not forget that every councillor is in receipt of eighteen thousand pound every year to be invested into their communities. And the benefits of this can't be overstated. Chair, I am extremely proud of our financial management of this authority and I would ask all members to support the proposed budget. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. councillor Curtis Bahari.
Thank you Chair. The budget set out today doesn't really come as a surprise to anyone. An increase in council tax, cuts to local services and some good old Labour bashing. Now you can say what you like about this joint administration, but you have to admire their consistency. I'm sure they're extremely grateful that the Labour government is providing an extra forty-eight million pounds in funding this year, the largest increase by some way. But we've heard this morning how it's not enough and I just want to focus on why it's not enough. Budgeting is difficult, there's no doubt about that, especially after fourteen years of Tory austerity. But what's not difficult is picking your priorities. What have the joint administration prioritized? Well certainly not Ferry Hill, that's for sure. They sold the new county hall, then realised this building isn't fit for purpose and that we do in fact need a new home. So when they said they don't need a second county hall, I didn't know it's because they were secretly eyeing up a third one. Then they decide to open a fancy restaurant with huge running costs that nobody asked for. Then recently we found out they're going to buy Milburn Gate in the city centre for fifty million pounds. Now imagine what we could do with just a fraction of that money in Ferry Hill. I could go on Chair, but I think these three examples show what happens when you value political opportunism over sound financial management. So at the end of their term in office, their legacy will be that of four council tax increases equaling eighteen percent, fifty million pounds worth of cuts kicked down the road and massive debt. But we can prevent the latest punishing measures today by voting down this budget. And I just wanted to end with this Chair and alludes to something that councillor Quinn said. Our new reform members claim to be the real opposition in County Durham. So I would ask them to put their money where their mouth is and join the actual opposition in County Durham and vote down this budget. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor.
Point of clarification Chair, the reform members have never said that. I don't know where he's got that information from.
Thank you councillor. councillor Stacey Dean-Lee.
Thank you Chair, councillor Stacey Dean-Lee for Blackhalls division. I am pleased to see that Durham County Council is benefiting from new money from government, particularly the increase in social care grant and the funding for special educational needs services. However, we all know that despite this good news, we are still facing inflationary pressures in these areas. Our children and young people's officers and staff work extremely hard throughout the year and have certainly utilised every resource to its full potential and I believe that they will continue to do so. However, I am also extremely concerned about the cuts outlined in the budget to early help and the youth justice service and the long-term impact this might have. From reports presented here not so long ago, we have heard how these services intertwine with children's social care and special educational needs services, providing preventative and supportive measures to help our most vulnerable children and their families. It is therefore disappointing to see cuts to vital services such as these. There are many other issues with this budget that have been outlined by colleagues today and I truly believe that this budget does not put residents of County Durham first and therefore I cannot support it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. councillor Paul Sexton.
Thank you Chair, Paul Sexton, Chesterley Street South. Firstly, I'm not going to lecture anybody on here Chair, although I will be transparent and say I can grow it if I want to, I just decide not to. It's got a little bit political this, if I'm honest with you, and I think we should have really stuck to the agenda item. In terms of part B, I did ask how many people had signed for part B, I was told they would have to look into it. We also asked could we discuss part B, that was being under consideration. So I think the relevance of the statement made, I don't agree or disagree with it, is you know, a bit moot. Alex has just said the financial situation is dire, that's his opinion, he's probably more informed than I. However, my understanding is we have a budget deficit. The budget deficit is created by the people who make the decisions on huge capital projects. We're actually one point two million below average for a local authority our size, this after a global pandemic, a war stroke cost of living crisis across the globe. We'll talk about efficiency measures Chair. What about inefficiency measures? I'm not going to touch on every project, some of them have already been touched on, but five hundred social homes, houses, none. councillor Moist kept asking, getting the same answer, couple of months, went on, a year, two years, nothing. It didn't appear to be a plan, there was nothing transparent for us to track, we kept being told it was on schedule. It turns out it wasn't. And I think about three months before the announcement was made, we were still told that in this chamber. The bus station at Durham, a five point in eight million pound project, not a complex project, not a complex project, and with contingency within that budget, four point two million over, that's eighty percent over. The DLI has morphed from thirteen million to twenty, to twenty-three. And now we're talking about Milburn Gate, it scares me. Chesterley Street has been promised a leisure centre as we're saying. And as councillor Bell said last year in this very room, when people from Chesterley Street and surrounding area voted for the budget for the refurb, I have a document in my house from November twenty twenty, Ian Thompson, portfolio holder Carl Marshall, which was furnished us in cabinet in twenty-one, that Chesterley Street could not be refurbished because of the mechanical and electrical. Yet it was voted on, a couple of months later refurbishments cancelled, now it's back in. How can we believe this administration? How can we trust this organisation to deliver on projects on time and on budget? Maybe if we had a plan that we could see and we could track the milestones, see the risk logs, the financial trackers. It appears we're being kept in the dark, we have to pull the information and we don't get the full picture. So I don't believe we are good at budgeting and delivering projects. And I spoke to officers about the budget, the leisure centre was actually seventeen million per leisure centre, went to twenty, then to twenty-five and now it's circa thirty five million. Why is that? It's because we lack the experience to budget properly and certainly to deliver projects in this organisation. So to saddle us with more capital programme and associated debt and millions each year we're paying, but we're not sure what the yield is, whether it worked or whether it not. It's very cloak and dagger, smoke and mirrors. And it's about having that faith in that. And I certainly just don't have it unfortunately. The HQ strategy, we're still here four years later, I voted in cabinet to sell the HQ. My, that would be different now hindsight, be absolutely different now. We're told about having to make a decision today Chair. Of course we'll have to find a balanced budget, but I don't think it's balanced. It's very Durham centric, it's already been said. Councillor Scurfield and councillor Van Tarro have championed the high street in Chesterley Street and the leisure centre and it's fallen on deaf ears, as have myself and councillor Moist, it's fallen on deaf ears. We sometimes don't even get a reply from cabinet members. We are elected members and I think we should be at least afforded that courtesy. I don't think I can vote for this budget today for what I've actually just said. It's very Durham centric, it's balanced in somebody else's mind, not in mine. Towns and villages aren't getting their fair share and we're being loaded up with debt which we'll have to put interest payments on for decades to come. I don't know whether they'll work. The Milburn Gate, we're talking about self-financing, how do you know it's self-financing? It's aspirational that if it yields what you think it's going to yield, it will potentially pay for itself, but it's very high risk. What happens if it doesn't? What happens if it doesn't? Finally Chair, if you vote for this budget and the five percent council tax increase, one of the councillors over there, I can't remember who it was, actually said we've had a cost of a life living crisis, a pandemic. But you're asking the very people who are on furlough, who went through exactly the same, to cough up yet again and pay for our inefficiencies in this organisation at not being able to deliver projects. Millions of pounds. Durham Bus Station, had it been delivered on time and on budget, you could have almost took two percent off. And that's not the only project. It's time we got really good at delivering this, but nobody seems to want to listen. I did try. Voting this budget down today or abstaining or voting for it is each individual's prerogative. I can't do it for what I've said. But I feel almost pressured and scaremongered about the legal requirements, the legal requirements are clear, we've got till March the eleventh. We can pause it today and get round the table like adults. I think by the look in this room and the fact that was people paid to be counting people in and out this morning when we're coming in, it might be a tight vote, it might not, I don't know how people are going to vote. But there surely isn't a huge mandate if it does get pushed through today for it. If it doesn't get through, let's get round the table, pause it today, get round the table, put some alternatives in and before people say to me, well, why didn't you put a budget forward? People keep reminding us we're only a small group of six and we're probably almost irrelevant. In fact, that much so we can't even get seats every month when we come in. But we basically would be happy to sit round the table with all the other groups. And I spoke to Paul Derby when he graciously, and sorry Paul, I forgot to thank you and your team for giving us the time, some fantastic information, and answered our questions very quickly. But I did ask Paul at the time and other officers, if we didn't push it through today and it's all been, already been alluded to today, we can get round the table and any amendment would be classified as an alternative budget. So that's what I'll be hoping people will do today and then we can come back hopefully and say right unanimously, we've all agreed to this budget. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. councillor Elizabeth Scott.
Yes, thank you Chair. Oh, is that me? I just want to pick up on a, on a couple of points that have been raised. Firstly, the Labour group like talking about delivering jobs, like mentioning numbers. In fact, the joint administration has delivered eight thousand new jobs, they're real, they've happened, they're not speculation. The Labour group like talking about prosperity, but in fact the joint administration has delivered a two billion pound increase in the worth of our economy and that has enabled eighty million pounds worth of private investment to match the thirty million pounds towns and villages investment that this council has put in, in the life of this council. The Labour group are followers within this chamber like talking the county down. That is not the way of the joint administration, we've put County Durham on the national and international stage and increased our visitor economy from below a billion to one point two, three billion pounds last year. The Labour group love blaming other people about the state of our economy. We have spent a huge amount of time developing with people out in the community, young people, older people, the inclusive economic strategy which we are now delivering on. These are really important changes that this county has seen and which are bolstered by the budget that we are proposing today. I will just mention a couple of things about Milburn Gate and this is setting the record straight Chair. It has been mentioned in this chamber, despite members being fully aware of the facts that we are buying the development for fifty million pounds, that is a budget envelope for the acquisition plus everything else involved in getting the doors open and really, really making it happen. Self-financing means that the tenants pay the costs of borrowing, so any inference that this is a cost to the taxpayer simply is not realistic. And I will pick up on something that councillor Marshall said, because he mentioned in his preamble that this, the joint administration were taking legal action against our own developers. The developers at Milburn Gate are not our developers councillor Marshall, they may be your developers, but they aren't the council's developers. Thank you.
councillor Kevin Shaw.
Thank you Chair. And thank you councillor Scott for the eight thousand jobs, they must all be working down the road there at the Art Gallery. The budget decision before today is shaped by years of past failures, failures that have left this council burdened with debt, wasted opportunities and significant additional financial pressures. Dividend delay has only worsened the situation and reserves being used to prop up a failing budget. I'm deliberately not going to personalise this, but just in regards to this building that we're standing in here now, as a councillor spoken in the chamber who asked for this to be a listed building in the past, he might get his whist because it will be a building that constitutes blight. Let's be clear, this is the best law of government settlement in fifteen years and without it the deficit this coalition has kicked down the road would have been over thirty million pounds worse. There's been a criticism in here that we haven't put in an alternative budget. I remember sitting over that side, year after year, there was never an alternative budget put in, there was a couple of amendments put in, one of which I actually got at nine fifty on the morning when I was a cabinet member. We accepted it, we actually amended the budget to include it and the person who submitted it voted against it, so it just shows you, you can't win. Let's talk about Eighty Heads, a strategic employment site designed to create up to five thousand jobs. Got knocked down to four thousand jobs after twenty twenty-one when we came in, I think it's now, the number now kicking about is three thousand jobs and that's aspirational. Not a single job is being delivered on this site, in fact jobs are being lost. Worse still, the opportunity to create new jobs is slipping away as we see things like the data bank being delivered on this site, which has lost, I don't know, two hundred and fifty jobs?
One minute councillor.
We once had a clear vision, a purpose-built HQ, a vacant site ready for five thousand jobs, homes built to support our communities, investment in our towns and villages, investment for jobs and growth. Leisure transformation scheme to benefit all of the county. And now we're seeing twenty-two million pounds squandered down at the Art Gallery restaurant, built on a fantasy business case which still requires six hundred and fifty thousand pound a year in revenue support. That money alone could have delivered two hundred new homes. Instead we're seeing investment in Durham City, the loss of our communities. Our residents deserve better Chair, our communities deserve better. It's time to stop the wait, stop the delays and start delivering for the needs and commitments made of the people we serve for all of our communities. I cannot support this budget, it needs to be torn up and an opportunity given for it to be rewritten in a form that all members can agree for all of our communities, not just for Durham City.
Thank you Chair. Thank you councillor. councillor Simon Wilson.
Thanks Chair, Simon Wilson, Saxon Division. I think I've said it before in here, but I look at what's gone on with this coalition as very much a microcosm of what happened nationally fourteen years ago. We had the Lib Dems, the Tories go together, independents have joined them, reform are now with them and essentially where the Lib Dems and Tories started a process which led to this country having a cost of living crisis and in huge debts, we are now seeing that play out from the same type of coalition here in County Durham. We have a fantastic government settlement compared to what we've had recently, the fact that actually going round the North East, people are over the moon at local authorities about the fact that actually this is the first step back towards fair funding. We have a commitment to fair funding, how that looks will obviously be scrutinised and lobbied for, but that is there, that is a future plan.
Please may I ask that we are a bit respectful and not shout across the chamber?
Sorry. Sorry, I'm just a bit away from the mics, I wanted to be able to be heard within that. The other side is that on top of that, we are seeing the fact that we are going to get longer settlements from this government coming through and all I've heard from the opposition, from the, from the from the benches here is twist, twist, twist. As councillor Shaw says, where would you be if you weren't that thirty million pounds better off this time round? This is again, I'm from Sackerson, I'm one of the villages, I am seeing the same pattern of every year that the villages and towns have been left behind. Everything's in Durham, and I tell you what, it is something that myself and my colleague in Sackerson get from parish councils in our area every time about how hard we have to fight to deliver anything in Sackerson, which we do, and then when we go just over the border to Newton Hall and Framilg Mua, people are seeing everything being taken care of. I will also say, this twisting about the government and the settlement over the last four years, the amount of times we have stood here when the government, the Tory government, let this county down through things such as RAC, levelling up and other issues around that, where we asked them for support to go to government and they refused to criticise them.
One minute, councillor.
They did not do anything and they just talked it down as if it will be fine, we've got the crumbs from the table, instead of actually what is looking like a move towards much fairer funding in this council. There's absolutely no way I can support this budget.
Thank you, councillor. Passion's a wonderful thing, but... But can we kind of remember where we are? Karen, councillor Karen Fantaro.
Hi, I'm Karen Fantaro, Chesterton Street. I feel today, and I'm not a public speaker as such, definitely not about politics, I'm a people's person, I'm very much of an independent, individual person that listens to the people that she represents, and I couldn't vote for this budget, I couldn't at all. The people in Chesterton Street want change in Chesterton Street, we've got nothing, we're the forgotten town, no leisure centre, charges for the parking, which we don't get any sort of benefit from, we have our health and social care provisions is very bad, no drug and alcohol provisions, which is causing antisocial behaviour, antisocial behaviour at a high level that the town can't manage. Lately, we've been in the papers for things that we don't want to be in the papers more, antisocial behaviour, storing bikes riding up and down the front street, car chases, brothels, that's not what we want to be known for, we want to be known for the market town, we want investment back in our town, and we believe as councillors of Chesterton Street that if we were looked after correctly, we could bring Chesterton Street back to where it was, we could change the footpath of the front street, make it more in line with how people are shopping now, but at the moment, we are not given this opportunity. I am very well aware that the things that happen across the county are in the areas where people hold certain seats, are able to do that, and that just doesn't happen in Chesterton Street, we're not there, we're not in those parts of the decision-making. I heard that little bit about our leisure centre, do I believe it? No, I can't now, definitely not, after what I was told about levelling up when I first became a councillor, so I definitely can't believe that we have any plans in the current budget or with the current administration that Chesterton Street will be getting anything.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Declan Mulholland.
Cheers, thanks very much, Chair. I wasn't going to speak today, but I just wanted to talk to a few things, I wanted to talk to the financial history of this coalition. You know, I remember at the time, in twenty twenty-one, some of the members of the opposition banging on the tables as they took control of the council. I remember thinking to myself, what's going to bind this council together? And what I think has been abundantly clear since that is that the council has lacked a vision, specifically a political vision, and that in the early days, the only thing that sort of bound them together was an anti-Labour agenda, and that has manifested itself in many ways that have been particularly economically detrimental for the county. So first of all, Eighty Head, the DLI, Milburn Gate, back-to-back economic incompetence, and who funds the bill for this? Well, as we know, it's our residents, it's the taxpayer. So it's my opinion that this budget and this administration is fundamentally flawed at its core, it does nothing for my residents in Burnfield and Dipden, and it's my belief that once again, it's far too focused on the city of Durham and its towns and villages. So for these reasons, I will be voting against the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Veronica Andrews.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Paul, for the report. It's a very brief comment, and it relates to Concert Empire again. This theatre's closing for two days a week despite the money that's been invested in the past year, and that's going to have a huge impact because we will lose the movies that we get, the current movies. I use that theatre, I was there last week watching a Bob Dylan movie, I go to the theatre quite regularly, I use the cafe there, we're going to lose that facility, the hours have already been reduced to the staff. We've got a cleaner there who's only on nine point five nine hours to clean that whole theatre on a weekly basis and has to do split shifts when they have mat knees, which is very difficult to do. And I talk to the staff when I go in, we've got a very unhappy team in there, they're very unsure and they're scared to even carry holidays forward because they don't think the theatre's going to be sustainable after they close for those two days, and that's all I want to say on it. But I agree with everybody else over here who had to say about the budget, and I'm going to be supporting them against it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Danny Wood.
Thank you, Chair. Just in responding to some of the comments and questions about the budget today, I'd just like to start off by saying, it's a little bit strange to hear people like councillor Scott accusing Labour of blaming other people when we've heard this morning what's going out on Lib Dem leaflets across the county, blaming Labour for a council tax increase they're voting on this morning. Councillor Quinn, it was an interesting point he raised, it was actually back in February twenty twenty-four. I know, we can all tell this was a long time ago because he was a Conservative at the time, but it was actually a comment made about the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five fiscal year, so just for the avoidance of doubt, that's the council tax bill you've just finished paying if you are paying by direct debit, and it was about government funding that was available at the time. The quote was given at the time by the leader of the opposition about how a Labour government would have spent money differently. It has absolutely no bearing on setting the council tax for next year, and I think it was quite a strange point to have raised. In terms of councillor Walton, if you don't agree with the government making unfunded spending commitments, I can only suggest that you don't vote Conservative in the future, because that's exactly what's happened without one. What I want to talk about today, Chair, was borrowing. So a big part of this budget and the MTFP we're looking at is a hundred and sixty million of new capital spend, and borrowing is going to hit over one billion in the next two years. This isn't a capital programme, it's a Capital One programme. The cost of servicing this debt alone will reach nine per cent of our revenue budget and will take nearly forty years to repair. The new capital spending alone, so just this year's, is a fifteen million pound per year budget pressure for us at a time when we're saying we've got no money, and it's equivalent, it's an equivalent cost to a further five point one seven per cent increase in council tax in future years. So it's a colossal amount of money we're talking about. I think given the financial position and the comments we've heard about the political decisions behind this budget, we've been asked to make, we've been asked to max out the council's credit card at a time when we're at the bottom of our overdraft, and I don't think that's fair or acceptable for my residents. Councillor Wilkes mentioned petty political scoring and councillor Shield about erroneous and misleading figures to try and score political points. Councillor Shield raised the interesting question of what universe are we living in, and on that point, if nothing else, I do actually agree with him. We've been given a forty-eight million pound windfall from a new government after fourteen years and two hundred and seventy million pounds been cut out of this council's budget, and we're acting as if it's the worst settlement we've ever had. It's not, it's the best settlement we've had in fifteen years. I don't dispute that we have cost pressures, all local authorities do, but what would the budget today look like without that forty-eight million pounds? The grass wouldn't be cut, the lights would be out and the administrators would be in. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillors. There is no one else registered to speak. So, Susan Macdonald. Sorry, councillor McDonald.
Well, here we go again, it's Groundhog Day. And it would be funny, actually, if it weren't for the fact that the opposition once again demonstrate a total and utter lack of respect for Paul and his team, for all the work and effort they've put in to bring this budget here today. Mentions of bailiffs at the door, mentions of the credit card bill being stretched. We don't agree anything without Paul's say-so, and we pass everything through Paul in the first place. And why is this Groundhog Day again? Because they've offered no alternatives whatsoever. And I'm still waiting for this government, this Labour government, to tell us how they're planning to...
Susan, councillor, can I just hold you for a minute?
Thank you, Chair, just a very brief point of personal clarification on the comments I just made. I said we're being asked to max out the council's credit card bill. The reason I made that comment and that comment specifically, I was not saying in any way are we borrowing more than we should, and in fact, the advice from officers is that we couldn't afford to borrow more than we are, and I think that's the important point to consider. I'm not saying the budget wouldn't be balanced, I'm not saying the budget wouldn't be lawful, I'm saying it would be right up at the extremes of what we could borrow.
But you just said that the budget won't be balanced, in what you've said. Anyway, I'll carry on if you don't mind, I'll carry on.
I will have a second point of order.
Well, it's actually a point of clarity, Chair, with regard to who actually makes the decisions in this council, and the decisions are made by the politicians. Now, if a cabinet member doesn't even understand that, then that really worries me greatly. I have every respect for all of our officers of this council, but you, as the cabinet, make the decisions. Thank you, Chair.
I believe that was dealt with. I can assure you, I do understand the cabinet position, and I do understand the fact that we make the ultimate decision. However, we do it with the guidance of our very responsible financial officer who has set this budget today. But thanks for the comment. And I was about to say, I'm still waiting for this government, this Labour government, despite what we were told by councillor Crute last year, to tell us how they're planning to reform the current outdated and grossly unfair council tax system that's imposed upon us each and every year. Worse still, this government, despite the boost in our funding this year, this Labour government has told us that if we don't increase our council tax by the maximum possible, we'll be penalised financially next year, so they will cut our funding next year because we don't put up the council tax by the maximum this year. People have mentioned the towns and villages and being neglected. The neglection of the towns and villages hasn't just happened over the last four years. While we've been battling down the fires, picking up the pieces of the mess that the previous administration left us in, they've had control of this council for the previous hundred years. The towns and villages aren't suffering now because of what we've done in the last four years, it's what happened before then. So we're in a no-win situation, we have to put the council tax up because if we don't, the Labour government will cut our funding next year. If you can't support this budget today, I say shame on each and every one of you. Thank you.
There is no one else registered to speak, so I propose we move to close the debate. I will now invite councillor Richard Bell to speak.
Thank you, Chair, be as quick as possible, but after such a wide-ranging debate, that might not be too quick. I'd like to thank Paul Darby and Rob Davisworth and their teams for the very comprehensive and thorough report they've given, and for all the work they've done throughout the year to explain the budget to cabinet, scrutiny and everybody else. I've been impressed by the number of contributions from the Labour benches today to this budget debate. My only worry is you're about six months, nine months, twelve months too late. Where were you during all those scrutiny meetings? Where were you during all those cabinet meetings? Why do you wait until a full council budget debate to bring up your concerns about children's social care? I'm sorry, if you are serious about budgetary matters, then you engage earlier and properly and bring forward amendments, you just do, I'm sorry. I've heard a lot about neglect of towns and villages today. Nobody, with the exception possibly of John Shuttlerworth, lives further away from Durham than I do. Nobody is more concerned about Durham-centric development than I have. How many times do you have to be told that the fifty-five million pound budgetary envelope is self-financing? How many times do you have to be told that self-financing means that the rents pay for the borrowing and the capital principal sum? Which bit of it don't you understand? Which bit of it don't you understand that that does not mean that if you didn't do Milburn Gate, there'd be fifty-five million pounds to spend elsewhere? Which bit of it don't you understand? Or do you deliberately choose not to understand? Can I come on to the generous, fantastic, best ever since the last Labour government financial settlement? Eh? That change of government has not made much difference to our finances. What matters in budgets is the net position, it's what comes in and what goes out. If somebody gives you a tenner and takes you a fiver out of your back pocket, they've given you a fiver, yeah? And that's what's happened here. The additional funding being provided by the government next year totals forty-eight point eight million, but a significant proportion of that nineteen million is targeted specific grant funding which comes with new associated spending commitments. If you take off the three point eight million extra...
Richard, sorry. Councillors, can we afford councillor Bell the courtesy of listening?
If we take off the three point eight million extra employers' national insurance, we've had to pay out for our direct staff, and if you take off about the four million extra national insurance that we're having to pay our suppliers, our contractors in adults and children's social care, take off that eight million, I think you'll find the number is actually about the same as we had in the last two years. I got that email a couple of days ago from the finance team, there has been a marginal increase, if any increase, there has been no step change increase in funding from this new Labour government. End of diddly squat. That is why we are having to spend three point five million of reserves to balance our budget. The failure of the government to honour the budget pledge by Rachel Reeves to reimburse us in full is the reason we're having to use reserves to balance the budget. The government's failure to honour the pledge to give us seventy-three million of the CRSTS transport money and short changes by fifty million will impact our plans for infrastructure across the county. And it is true, I'm afraid, that the government's insistence that those councils receiving money through the recovery grant still increase their council tax by the full amount if possible effectively reflects a hardening of the previous government's expectation and means that we have no choice but to go for the full four point nine nine per cent. That's because they'll take money back from us, which bit of that don't you understand? And thank you for your influence, councillors opposite, in the new government in this generous settlement, you've done a really good job so far. Though in any case, we do need the money of four point nine nine per cent because of the unavoidable cost pressures that we've spoken of before, which far outstrip the extra grant available. I agree with councillor Adam, it's time for change, councillor Adam, it's time for adequate funding from government and a reform of the system. We wait with bated breath, we hope that will happen. Just to recap, back to the budget, the financial pressures we have to accommodate in order to set a balanced budget include eighteen million of additional costs in our adult social care budget directly as a result of the six point seven per cent increase in the national living wage and the changes to national employers' and national insurance costs. That alone requires a six point two per cent increase in council tax, meaning that the two per cent adult social care precept is more than justified. Sixteen point six million of additional looked-after children's placement pressures, in part again inflated by the changes to national living wage and employers' national insurance. Pay inflation for our directly employed staff of eight point nine million, every one per cent increase in pay roughly equates to one per cent increase in council tax. We've got three per cent in the budget next year, that's probably going to be inadequate on the back of the inflation figures today. Home to school transport, up by three million, I could go on. As we know, the total budget base pressure's total eighty-six million next year. Despite this challenging financial position, we're able to set a balanced budget, but only with the assistance of the eighteen point two million pounds worth of savings which have been widely consulted before, and the three point five million of the MTFP reserve. Some maybes feel we use too many reserves, but there's not enough. On the Labour benches, councillors seem to adopt both positions simultaneously, which takes some doing. We use reserves prudently so as to be able to phase in savings plans for meeting early retirement voluntary redundancy costs and so on, and to buy us more time to consider how sustainable savings solutions might be delivered. That's good financial management and is a strategy the previous Labour administration used on many occasions, I seem to recall. In terms of capital, we've talked about that quite a lot, our MTFP forecasts include fifteen point seven million of revenue required for potential borrowing, of which thirteen is for... of which 13 is for existing schemes that are in the pipeline. And there's no capacity to spend for additional schemes from capital. As has been said, the £55 million envelope for Milburn Gate is fully self-financing. There are significant uncertainties and concerns over what, if any, government increasing will receive from the revised approach to the funding formula. The government is making the right noises, but it seems very likely that we'll end up with a bigger slice of a smaller cake and no significant increase in funding from government. And what increases we do get may well be smoothed in over a number of years. As we stand here today, we are facing from the 26 to 27 to 28, 29 inclusive, a deficit of £45.8 million. I've consistently raised these issues with ministers, shadow ministers and RMPs over the last four years. I hope that councillor Marshall has more success than I have, but I'm not very hopeful on the evidence so far. Finally, I'd like to note the request of the Corporate Law Review and Scrutiny Management Board for a full and independent inquiry on Milburn Gate from its inception to its delivery. While this is a decision that will need to be taken by Cabinet and the CMT, I have no personal objection. Indeed, personally, I would like to make it harder for DCC to get involved in such schemes in the future. We are here to provide services to the people of this great county, not to underwrite speculative venture capitalists. But that was a decision reached in 2018 and its consequences are matters we have had to deal with over the last few years. A lot has been said about who went to the cabinet meeting, who's got Part B papers etc. Far as I'm aware, none of the Labour group has read Part B, perhaps they don't need to. Councillor Marshall has been intimately involved with this scheme from its inception. He signed up to the original deal, the cabinet meeting of June 2018, which councillor's names on this, councillor Kyle Marshall. He knows all about this Milburn Gate shoddy process from start to finish. His fingerprints are all over it, so I personally would welcome a full independent inquiry. With that Chair, I commend the proposal set out in this report and second the recommendations, noting the significant uncertainty and challenges that exist beyond the next financial year. And I ask all members to support the proposals in items 10 and 11. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillors, can I now ask the leader of the council to give her a right of reply?
Thank you Chair, I think you'll be pleased to know I'm not going to take too long. I think it's been, we've had a robust debate, but I just want to make a couple of points. So, we heard about all the amazing Labour leaders we've got, we have a Labour mayor. We wouldn't have been part of that had it been for the leader of opposition who went, tried his very best to derail that at every opportunity, who spoke to people to tell them not to let us in, to make sure that Durham wouldn't have been included.
Chair, can I just, I have a point of order, it would be really helpful if the leader of the council could substantiate comments she's making because I don't believe that what she's saying is true.
I'll get that for you Carl, don't worry. So, so much of a disaster is this budget we've heard, that for the fourth year in a row, we haven't got one single amendment. I've heard so many ideas today, but they come to the budget meeting, which makes them more about political posturing than about delivering for the people in County Durham. If they were so important, then you would have been participating in the scrutiny process. The groups would have taken part in looking to produce amendments to go forward for Cabinet to consider. We've heard lots of different figures. Some people can't even use the same figures that they're quoting during the course of the same meeting. We've had 3,000 jobs, 2,000 jobs, 5,000, 6,000, who knows? I'd like to agree with a couple of points councillor Early. So I would hope that you would support the budget because you did say that things had to change and we have made a provision for transformation programme within this budget. We have heard about getting round the table. That's easier said than done. At the last council meeting, I believe we were asked to produce and meet round the table to discuss empty buildings. Not one member of the opposition turned up for that meeting. I've been asked, I've been asked for twice to put something on the constitutional working group.
Point of order Chair.
Sorry, sorry, I'll correct that, they came in 50 minutes after it started. So I've been-
Point of order Chair, I was at a hospital appointment at the time.
I've been asked twice to put something on the constitution working group where we discuss things for the person not to attend and take part. We've had no amendments since scrutiny, no other groups amendments. So, why do we think that all of a sudden we can sit round a table in the next couple of days and be able to put something together that's significantly different? Because that's what we're hearing that you want, because obviously nothing's right in this budget. That the officers will have time to cost and fund. And as for our villages and towns, the last time I looked, all our villages and towns had footpaths. They had roads. Most of them have vulnerable-
Councillors. Can we remember that we're in the chamber? The public are asking us to do a job. Please do it with courtesy.
And I suspect that most of our villages and towns, if not all of them, will have vulnerable adults and children and people who benefit from our council tax reduction scheme. So by voting down this budget, you would be voting against all of those things that are in there to protect everyone in County Durham. And again, I'm not quite sure how we're going to square the circle of borrowing less but spending more. And I have been quite shocked to hear some of the comments that relating to these reports and in effect are speaking really poorly about our professional section 151 officer, legal officer and chief executive. This is a balanced budget despite what has been said. And all of this has been through a robust and clear method to get here. So I ask people today, that in light of the fact that we have no amendment, I'm not even going to say alternative, we don't even have an amendment, to look, this is the budget that's before us today, and I'd like council to agree it.
Councillors, is it a point of order or a point of personal clarification?
It's a point of clarity again Chair, and I respect, I mean I respect everything you do in this chamber. And I know that this has been a very hard meeting in lots of ways, but I do think that there should be the respect given by the leader of this council with regard to things that have been said in this meeting. No one, and I'm sitting here too, as someone who is listening, not one member has criticised any officer of this council in this meeting. What we are talking about are political decisions, and this scares me greatly that the leader of this council is prepared to make those accusations against members of this council who are making political points about political decisions. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Gunn for that point of personal clarification. I will now hand over to the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to proceed with the recorded vote on the motion relating to the medium term financial plan 2025, 26, 2028, 2029 and capital and treasury management strategy. Members.
Thank you Chair. So we'll load the vote. As I said at the start, we need two separate votes, both of which will be named, so how you vote will appear in the minutes for each item. You'll hear the buzzer to open the vote. It's one in favour of the recommendations, two against and three to abstain. We're voting on item 10 first. If you press the wrong button and vote the wrong way, pressing the right button will correct it. That's the vote open, and if you've got problems with your handsets, raise it in the air and the team will come and help.
Close the vote. Councillors. Councillors. Item 10. Medium term financial plan 25, 26, 27, 28, 29 and capital and treasury management strategy. Four, 59, against 57, no abstentions, recommendations are carried. Councillors, we'll move on to item 11.
So again, it's exactly the same process, if you wait for the buzzer to indicate that the voting is open. It's one in favour of the recommendations, two against and three to abstain. Again, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right one will correct it. And any problems with your handsets, please raise them in the air.
Councillors, we'll close the vote. So for item 11, council tax set in order to meet the council requirements. Four, 59, against 57, no abstentions, therefore the vote is carried. Councillors. We move on to item 12, to appoint chairs and vice chairs to the following committees. Can I invite nominations for the following positions? Chair of area planning committee South and West.
Sorry Chair, just before we get on to that, can I just ask on a point of clarification about how we've arrived voting for these like six weeks before an election? Is it because some of the members got chucked out the Conservative group, or why is this happening?
We have had changes in political balance and as a result of that vacancies have arisen. We do have meetings in the diary for some of these meetings. In the ordinary course of business where vacancies in these positions occur, we do bring them to the next available council meeting. So we're following usual course and in fact we have made chair appointments at this meeting in the past, albeit not in an election year.
For Chair of area planning committee South and West, nominations.
Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Julie Cairns.
Second that Chair.
Chair, I nominate councillor David Hall.
Can I second that?
Other nominations? No. We will go to a vote.
If I could just ask members to bear with us while we load this vote, because we haven't been given advance notice of the nominations. So just bear with us and it will follow the same process. So that's the vote open. If you want to vote for councillor Julie Cairns, select one. Councillor David Hall, two, three to abstain.
Sorry Chair, can I ask for a new vote? Thank you. Far as I'm aware, the vote hasn't closed.
Sorry, it's not clear who's standing to leave the meeting or standing to have the named vote. Yeah, that's carried.
Chair, could I seek some clarification please Chair? Does the person who's selected have to already be a member of the committee?
They will need to be a member of the- They will need to be a member of the committee to take up the post, but because of the political balance changes, there are still changes taking place. If the individual doesn't have a seat, then we'll need to bring the matter back.
So only one of the people whose name's up there is currently on the committee is what I'm basically asking? Thank you. She's the first one.
Can I ask members to not leave the room until we've closed the vote, please? I'm sorry, we're going to have to rerun the vote because we've lost, we've, we've had members vote and leave the chamber. So we now don't know what, what the valid vote is. So we are going to have to close it and reopen it. Okay, so it's one in favour of councillor Cairns, two for David Hall, three to abstain. And again, please, if you could just wait until we've closed the vote before you leave the meeting. Thank you.
Councillors, we're closing the vote. Councillors. Councillors, can I have your attention? The vote is councillor Julie Cairns, 59, David Hall, 48. No abstentions. Councillor Julie Cairns is appointed. We move on to Vice Chair of General Licensing and Registration Committee. Could I have nominations?
Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Terry Duffy.
And I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other nominations?
Chair, nominate councillor Marion Wilson.
Can I second that, please?
Can we also ask for a name vote as well, please?
Okay, so again, the net, the request for the name vote has been carried. Again, we'll load the voting slide. And once the vote is opened, if you select one for Terry Duffy or two for Marion Wilson or three to abstain. Again, if I could ask you to stay in the room until we close the vote, please, to make sure your vote can be counted. Thank you.
Councillors, we're closing the vote. Thank you, councillors. Vice Chair, General Licensing and Registration, the vote is councillor Terry Duffy, 57, councillor Marion Wilson, 48. Councillor Duffy is appointed. Thank you. We move on to the Vice Chair of Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Can I have nominations?
I nominate councillor James Coslett.
Thank you.
I second that, Chair.
Thank you.
I nominate councillor Julie Skirfield, please, and could I have a name vote?
Could I second that?
So again, as before, it's one for councillor James Coslett and two for councillor Julie Skirfield, three to abstain. Please don't leave the chamber until we've closed the vote. Thank you.
Councillors, we're closing the vote. Councillors, Vice Chair of Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee, councillor James Coslett, 56, councillor Julie Skirfield, 48. Councillor Coslett is appointed. Thank you. Councillors, we move on to item 13. Questions? Councillors. Questions from members? No questions have been received for today's meeting. That concludes today's meeting for the council meeting. I'd like to thank everyone to be taking part and to those members of the public and media who have been watching this meeting.